All right, it's seven o'clock and we have a quorum present. Our fifth member seems to have disappeared. I'm going to call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is always the citizens' concerns. It's where people in the audience can address issues that are not on our agenda briefly. Yes?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. And like you allowed John Benson to announce his campaign, I just learned that I'm certified for the ballot for the Board of Selectmen position also. And I am concerned about a lot of things, but I think the Nagog Water -- Nagog, excuse me, the water treatment plant is probably the thing that got me out of my seat. I believe we need a strong voice for not approving a building of that size. I also think that it's important to buy Kmart parking lot if we can. I think it'll cost us less and we'll get what we want. I think we need a strong voice for triple bottom line sustainability, including fiscal, social, and environmental planning, very strong planning, to include facing our social obligations and limits on environment and ensuring that our plans and policies allow for that sustainability, including the middle class to afford to stay in Acton. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara. Anybody else, citizens' concerns? All right, next item is chairman's update. I assume that everybody had a good Super Bowl Sunday yesterday, whether you watched the game or not, and everybody has recovered from the parties, the loss if you're a Patriots fan, or the long awaited win if you're a Philly fan. Memorably good game whichever team you rooted for. A little word about Dory Hunter, former longtime Acton resident and Board of Selectmen member, passed away on December 26, 2017, in East Windsor, New Jersey. He served in the Coast Guard, he practiced law, he was a member of the school committee for six years, and then he served on the Board of Selectmen for 25 years. First joining the board, I think, in the 1980s, just after Joan's first set of years of service ended, and then leaving the board in 2008 when Mr. Berry was still in his first term. Services in his memory will take place this spring in New Jersey and his ashes will be scattered in Lake George where he used to sail during the summer. The obituary in the beacon closed with Dory's own words, "I would hope that I would be remembered for my love of my family, service to the community, Coast Guard service, and lawyering," in that order of importance. I'm circulating a card among the board members and the town manager to send to his widow, Vanetta Hunter, and the family, and I probably will, a warning to my colleagues, I'll probably insert some sort of letter with a brief tribute to him as well. On the topic of recreational marijuana, I will be meeting with Planning and Health Department Directors, plus maybe the Planning Board Chairman later this month to discuss possible local regulations. I would mention that Concord's newly released Annual Town Meeting Warrant has several proposals on recreational marijuana sponsored by different town committees. There's a proposed general bylaw amendment by the Board of Health to ban non-medical marijuana establishments. There's a proposed zoning amendment by the Finance Committee to adopt local 3% sales tax on marijuana products. There's a proposed zoning amendment by the Planning Board to extend the existing moratorium from July 31 to December 31, 2018, so same as what we just approved at last December's special town meeting. The Acton Chinese Language Schools 15th Chinese New Year Celebration will be this coming Sunday, the 11th, from 2:00 to 8:30 p.m. The schedule typically includes activities, I think for probably younger people, but it could be for adults as well in the afternoon, a buffet dinner early evening, and entertainment in the auditorium at the end, and I urge my colleagues to respond if you haven't already. The Discovery Museum sent an invitation, I think it's to all board members, to attend the event on March 3 to see the newly expanded facility. Please RSVP by the deadline of February 16. And finally, there's an issue that's I've become aware of recently involving the meeting room file storage in Town Hall, looking into whether we need more security for files, committee and other files stored in the file cabinets in the meeting rooms, given that apparently some people have been looking through the files without permission from the committee members. And that is all, Mr. Manager.
Just quickly about Dory. Dory was chairman of the board when I was hired 10 years ago, and one of my favorite recollections of Dory was at Budget Saturday in 2008. And I hadn't started yet, but he had me working anyways for the town. But I remember somebody on FinCom at Budget Saturday said something like, well, first of all, Dory's role in the Coast Guard, he was a JAG, he was a judicial prosecutor, basically. And so somebody on FinCom that morning said, you know, "The town spends money like drunken sailors." And Dory said, "I take difference. I know something about drunken sailors." And that's one of the first things I always remembered about him. I wanted to just go over, we just received our new OPEB valuation for the year ending -- or for the two years ending December 31, 2016, which is up on the screen, and it's really extremely good news. The red delineates our last evaluation, which was December 31 of 2014, and the blue is our new evaluation. So you can see that in just two short years, we have basically lowered our unfunded liability, if you look at the 2017 column, by about $4 million, and our payoff of the unfunded liability has gone from 2036 to basically 2032. So we've seen some dramatic shift in our OPEB unfunded liability. You know, a lot of it is we've budgeted religiously every year for the last few years to deal with that. We also have, anytime we've created a new position in the town budget, we've added a factor to the salary, called an OPEB factor, so we neutralize that impact on future health insurance for people who retire. So I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention. It's really extremely good news, and you can see there is some end in sight to our OPEB liability. And that's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. 7:10 p.m., it's a little bit beforehand, but Mr. Levine, if you're here, you could start setting up. I don't know if you have a slide presentation, if you want to make sure that it's working But let me, while I'm here, why don't I go through the consent agenda? I think that there's one item that Mr. Berry wants to pull, but there's enough time. Item 6, 53 River Street Master Plan Committee Appointments. Did you want to hold that, Peter?
Aye.
Okay. Number 7, Boston Brain Tumor Ride. Item 8, Request to Dispose of Obsolete Items at Acton Memorial Library. Item 9, Accept Gift, Recreation Department. Gift totaling $1,500 from Middlesex Savings Bank to support production costs for the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 10, Accept Gift, Recreation Department. Gift totaling $6,000 from Gould's Clothing to support costs for Acton's Independence Day Celebration. Item 11, Accept Gift, Recreation Department. Gift totaling $25 from Brenda Cooper and Thomas Dorance for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. Item 12, Accept Gift, Recreation Department. Gift totaling $250 from Powder Mill Animal Hospital to support production costs for the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 13, Accept Gift, Recreation Department. Board to accept a gift holding totaling $1,500 from Especially for Pets to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series. Item 14, Accept Gift, Planning Department. Gift totaling $4,500 from Costa Duncan Town Inc. toward the Acton Bike Sharing Program. Item 15, which one are you holding, the bike sharing? Oh, item 15, okay. Item 15, Committee Appointment, Lucy Kirshner, Associate Member, Water Resources Advisory Committee. Item 16, Committee Appointment, R. Luke Evans, Full Member, South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee. Item 17, Fee Recommendations, Recreation Department. Peter, you held item 6.
Yeah, I sent a new memo to Lisa, but I'm not sure she had time to print it out. I mean, basically, I inadvertently listed eight full members and two associate members, where the charge calls for seven full members and three associate members. So I'm proposing to amend the list to move Lewis York from being appointed a full member to being appointed an associate member. And so I'd just like to make a separate motion on this to make it clear in the whole consent agenda.
Okay. Why don't we take care of this one? Why don't you go ahead and just make that motion? We'll take care of this and we'll take...
Okay, well, I'd move that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following residents to the 53 River Street Master Plan Committee. Peter Berry, the Selectmen's representative, is a full member. William Aylesbury as a full member. Don Boyle as a full member. John Cook as a full member. Michelle Holland as a full member. William Clower as a full member. Robert Whitlessy as a full member. Lewis York as an associate member. Camille Duquette as an associate member. And Peter Hocknull as an associate member. We usually list these names in the agenda, but since there were eight appointments, I think that we didn't list them, so I wanted to make them public. And I also would add to that motion that the term for all of these members be for the life of this ad hoc committee.
Second. Go ahead. So Mr. Berry moves, and Katie seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. All right, Joan, you held item 15?
Yes, that should be Lucy Kirshner as a full member.
Okay, do you want to move to approve as a full member? Make a motion.
My move that we appoint Lucy Kirshner as a full member so that Water Resources and Housing Committee...
Second. Joan moves, and Katie seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And now for the balance of the consent agenda, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items 7 through 14 and 16 through 17.
Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining. Okay, Mr. Levine, you're on.
Hi, my name is Joseph Levine. Thank you for letting me come here this evening. What I'm here is to propose a small 40B project, 146 Prospect Street, obviously in Acton. So getting to it here. So the project is Sunnyside. This is my son, Sonny. He gets named this one. I named the last one after his sister. That was Adeline Way. There's Sonny, he's a good kid. Here's the general location of the property. 146 right here. Here is the junior high school. Green laser pointer doesn't work that well against a white background, but trust me, it's in walking distance of the junior high school, Route 111 and West Acton. Basic site description is .86 acre site. There are wetlands at the rear of the property. There's no significant other building constraints. There is access to town water, town sewer, gas. Again, like I mentioned earlier, it's walking distance to the schools, and it is adjacent to the commuter lot, to the South Acton Train Station. So what is being proposed? So we're proposing four single-family homes. One will be affordable. Three are market rate. They will all be four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, two-car garage. They all be, all of them will be approximately 2,400 square feet, and the lot sizes will all be approximately about 9,000 square feet. Here's the current site plan. Again, here's the current existing house, the location, Prospect Street at the bottom, and then the wetlands located at the rear of the property. The property gently slopes to the rear from the street, from Prospect Street, but not significantly, very gentle and gradual. This is the proposed site plan. These are the four houses. What's worth mentioning here is that these houses on this side and over here, they are set to comply with the current zoning sideline setbacks to the abutting properties. So these are set, they're 10 feet to the abutting property, which is what's currently mandated by the current zoning, and that won't change. So in between the houses is a little narrower, about a little bit more than, I believe it's 16 feet, 16 feet and change between the two. All driveways, nice and clean, nothing overly dense. Here's a rendering of how it would look coming up. Prospect Street towards 111. They're staggered a little bit. Again, I'll get into a little bit more detail, you know, that we, I've done this in the past in other projects in town, is to try to break up the front facade so they don't, they all don't look the same. So like here, you know, this window is split, and then, you know, you got the three split here, and then over here, you got three windows put together, kind of breaking up the colors and the, you know, you got the window here and no window here. Again, here's another look, straight on, just trying to mix up some details here with the windows, gable ends, things like that, size of the gables, things like that. Just break it up enough, kind of fits in better with the neighborhood, I found, from other projects. Again, here's this house close up, nice and clean, should fit in very appropriately with the neighborhood. And here's the rear of the property, there'll be walkouts. So that is the presentation. It's not very long because it's a very small project, only talking four houses. This project fits in with current understandings of master plan, where small projects should go. This is an infill project. Again, it's on town water and sewer, it's in walking distance to a lot of amenities and communal locations. So any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
Okay, thank you, Joan. And I would just mention that Nancy Tavernier, who's the chairman of the Acton Community Housing Corporation, which has recommended this project, is not here, but she has reminded me that Mr. Van Beeter is in the audience, just in case there are any questions for people regarding the ACHC's position or opinion about this. But are there questions, comments from the board? Katie, Peter, and then Peter.
Thanks, Joan. So in the application, I noted, so you're demolishing the existing house that's on there, and it was noted that it's not on the National Register of Historic Places. But I'm trying to remember, and I'm looking at Doug, the Historical Commission, if it's on the...
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's not on the Acton's historic list or anything like that.
Either, okay. I just wanted to confirm. And then my other question is how far along you are in terms of the, you know, detailed architectural designs of these houses? Because I know you're proposing right now to use, to hook them up to natural gas. And we are, we're in the process of developing our sustainability policy, and there are a number of groups in town that have concerns with expanded use of natural gas in town, are encouraging developers away from that. And if you're early on in the process, I would encourage you very strongly to consider looking at air source heat pumps, and we can get you more info on that.
I'm very familiar with air source heat pumps. And I think we can just discuss it, but I would say that, you know, there's pros and cons with air source heat pumps.
Sure, they've gone better recently.
I know they've gone better. I know that they're widely used in the housing authorities, and I think if you go and you survey people who've had them now for a year or so, I think you're going to get some mixed results, to be honest with you, about their opinions and things like that.
Yeah, I'd like, Peter, to talk about it, because I noticed in your report, Selectmen Report, that I think the Acton Housing Authority has some at some of their units, and they were just talking about the savings they've seen.
Yeah, well, actually...
That it's worked pretty well throughout the winter for them. But the other issue is that along Prospect Street, we've done mapping of the natural gas leaks in our town, and Prospect Street has, I think, two or three of the largest gas leaks.
Oh, really?
Yeah, in the town. So on the kind of lower end of Prospect Street, but in that area nonetheless. So just something I'd encourage you to look at seriously. I know there's questions on the LIP application about, you know, kind of your energy efficiency materials, and so I'd hope that they would, you know, give some credence to using that, to using air source heat pumps if you do. Because, you know, once you go to natural gas, it's very hard to get off of it, and it's sort of developments at this stage that we are trying to target, because they're really the ones where it's easier to make the change before you put it in. So we can get you any more information on that. But otherwise, I think, you know, I like that it's a small kind of proposal, and it fits in with, I think, what's, you know, recommended in our 2020 plan as well as our housing production plan, and so I think it fits in well with that otherwise. And thank you very much for proposing it.
Katie, just one question before I turn it over to Peter. What is the lower end of Prospect? Is the lower numbered end?
Oh, no, sorry, down by Central, I get my streets confused. Yeah, down by Central Street versus up by 111.
Okay, okay, I just, if I'm lower end, I haven't noticed that there was like a hill or something. Anyhow, okay. Peter?
That might be the higher numbered end.
They all have two-car garages, but it looks like you've got four parking spaces per unit, or two, at least that's the way I read it. I mean, maybe that's wrong. I thought maybe two of them were on the driveway. No.
No, every, every single one has a two-car garage, and then obviously you have the two parking spaces, you know, behind, you know, in the driveway.
In the driveway?
In the driveway.
Right.
You have two-car garage in that. Yeah, they all have two-car garages.
You want to encroach on the town's wetland setback. Does this wetlands connect up to Fort Pond Brook in the back there?
I do not believe so. I believe if you look, it's pretty much the wetlands, it's pretty isolated. I mean, it's pretty much the rear of the church property. It's pretty much right here, and it just, at the back of the property, in the blue line, there's a stone wall, and the wetlands, it's been flagged, and, you know, kind of comes over that line, you know, by species and hydrology. But it's just as isolated, and again, I'm not, you know, right here. But obviously, you know, we will have conversations with the Conservation Commission. We've had some informal conversations. I believe we can come to a very workable, you know, place that it can, we can accommodate as much as we can, so.
Okay, and then the last thing is you asked to waive the landscape design, I think.
The appraisal fee.
Yeah, I saw that. But you also asked to waive the landscape, or was it landscaping? I thought it was.
Don't believe so.
Where's your list of requested? I read it online, I haven't, okay, here it is. Traffic study, landscape plan, or what waiver is requested from this requirement?
Okay, I'm asking for a waiver of the landscape.
I mean, I assume you'd be willing to talk about screening if the neighbors have problems or whatever.
Absolutely. If you look at any of the projects I've done in town, most recently, Adeline Way, you know, that's kind of, I don't, I don't cheap out when it comes to the landscape, and I always, if any of the neighbors, again, we were next to Don Johnson, we gave him all the screening he wanted, we gave the people in the back. I mean, to me, that's the, you know, that's the important part, is the landscaping, you know, you build this good project, and if you just throw, you know, two, you know, clearance Home Depot bushes, you know, out front, that's not, it's going to be looking that great. So I guess we're asking for the waiver because I'm not worried about it. You know, I know that we're going to, we always spend, I always spend the money to make it look right, so.
Okay, I mean, I realize these are just concepts, but the pictures you have of the houses have just green.
Well, it's funny you bring that up.
We like, you know, low water tower plants.
I get you.
We like trees, we're a tree city.
It's funny you bring that up. As I was getting those renderings done, and I was working with the architect, I said, you know, "Do you have the bushes and the trees to make it look?" And I don't know if they even have the upgrade in the software, but you got like, everything looks like a Charlie Brown Christmas tree. So it would have totally defeated the purpose, so I couldn't, I couldn't have them and put the trees in, but yeah.
Okay, thanks. I don't have any other questions. I support the project.
Sheng San Guo Zhong? No? Okay. Yeah, Katie and Peter asked some of the questions I'd had. I forget. I know that I walked with the Conservation Commission, and I don't remember if it was for a resource delineation request, or if it was, it wasn't for an order of conditions yet, right?
No, it wasn't for an order of conditions. It was just to get the line approved.
So you've gotten, yeah, you have that, and then presumably you'll be going back.
And then we will proceed, the next step will be we will work with them for an NOI.
Right, okay, okay. And I have a question, because I don't know how far along you are in the designs, but, you know, we do have a design review board, and although it's, they're advisory, you know, nothing's mandatory, it sometimes is helpful if, you know, if you, to talk to them about just what you're proposing, and just get different input. If you, you know, if you really are reluctant to do that...
Well, I didn't, I didn't completely discount the design review board. What I imagined was the Selectmen's approval, and then this comes back from DHD, and then it goes into the proper channels, that all the departments and boards are afforded a chance to comment, and then if at that juncture the design review board would like to talk, I would, I'm more than happy to talk to them at that point. I just figured right now is a little premature, trying to just get things in the pipeline.
Okay, no, you're right about that. This is just really for preliminary, it's a, it's a local initiative program project, which means that it's with the collaboration of the town, and the idea is coming before us, what you're seeking is our letter, a letter endorsing the project in connection with your application for preliminary site approval, which is what we're looking for. And then, assuming that is issued, then you come back to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the complete comprehensive permit process under, you know, 40B. Well, no, that's good to know. And I would just add, finally, that you are, I had forgotten who had done Davis Place, but that was one of yours, and that's my favorite.
Oh, good.
40B project in town. No, I always, when, when people talk, complain about 40B projects, I always point to that one, and I say, "Would you know that that's a 40B project?" Because it is. I think that that one really turned out beautifully. Yeah, I am, I like it because it has, you know, it sort of has attached buildings, and so it sort of reduces the footprint, but, you know, I know that, having heard to, heard from a number of developers on projects lately, that the trend seems to be just single fans, to detached houses, because that's where the market is. But, okay, good, thank you. No other questions from the board? Okay, audience. You can, I think you're going to have to share the mic, or you could, if you want to, you could sit at one of the mics at the table and...
I appreciate it.
You okay? Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I want to, I'm going to set aside some of my comments for a general conversation about 40B and the concept of effectively watching our community resources be used for unnecessary building. But at this point in time, it appears that the established policy is to support a project like this. So I'm going to just talk about things we might be able to change. I do want to thank Joan for putting the finance into the original application, that was very helpful to me. I also want to thank him for choosing a house that isn't, doesn't have old growth materials. So the historic buildings in our town that are pulled down to build new building is a huge carbon footprint mistake relative to the concrete and the materials that are gathered or supplied from unsustainable sources. And so this particular one is not as offensive in that fashion. I agree with, and thank you, Katie, for bringing up the natural gas thing right away, right from the beginning. And I would urge Joan to, to provide for the infrastructure for heat pumps and geothermal right now. I have a house that's on gas, and I'm struggling to figure out how to get the geothermal and the electric heat pumps to work in my old house, and I would have appreciated that little bit of cost that, when the house is built, could have been there for me to be able to have an easy retrofit. I am hoping that our policy for LIPS and anything that we have a choice on can go to the DRB first, because once the designs are complete and the approvals are in place, it's very difficult to make design changes. I don't see a big audience of people from, of neighbors, do we have any neighbors here, objecting to this, but I do think that it's important. I think that beauty and aesthetics is also a right, and I think that we need to make sure these designs are within the character of the neighborhood. I'm glad that it's small. I think the small is good. I have a question about the, are all these buildings the same footprint, or is that going to stagger as well?
They are all the same inside. We always just change the front fenestration, so it looks different, but on the inside, 100%, same layout. Affordable market, same layout.
So the shape of the buildings is exactly the same, so cookie cutter? I mean, yeah.
I like to say more like Christmas cookies, that they taste the same on the inside, but you got a little different sprinkles that make it look different, but they taste the same, kind of like sugar cookies, that's what I would say.
Wooden or plastic sprinkles would they be?
Let's say tasty sprinkles, it's good tasting.
I see. Taste is certainly a difference of opinion, but are the, from the 3D rendering, that appeared that the heights would be different from the street? Is that the case? Or are they going to be straight and square, again, like the cookies that you showed on here?
When you look at the site plan, there is some setback. They're not all 100% in a straight line, and that is to balance distance from the street, and that is also to balance distance from the wetlands. So there's this happy medium you have to find. You don't want to be all the way on top of the wetlands.
So it's not straight?
It's not straight, but we kind of moved it in and out to kind of try to find a happy medium between this... between distance of the wetlands and distance from the street.
The height, the height isn't all the same?
Uh, when you look at the height of houses, they're going to be pretty much the same. We tried to keep the height down, but the heights are the heights.
Um, and the materials, isn't there any consciousness relative to sustainability in the, um, purchasing, the supply materials?
Uh, not so much. I mean, you're trying to keep this as a small project, trying to keep this as, um, economic as possible. So not more than anything else, but you have materials that are going to last longer. They're not going to need, you know, you're not going to keep working at it as if it was paint or cedar, you know, cedar siding, things like that.
So, um, to comment to the selectmen, I'd like very much to do some education on the finances and how much money there is and could be used, um, for more sustainable materials. Um, another thing is I mentioned, and this is maybe a, a general 40B thing, but I think that we need to track the number of acres per person that are being preserved. Um, I noticed that in the 2002 Open Space and Recreation Plan, that it was, I think, point three six acres per person and that had gone down in the next version of the open space to point three four or something like that. And so I think we need to track the cumulative impact of the growth and ensure that we're collecting fees to, um, contribute to the preservation of the land for both sustainable aspects, recharge on the water, uh, farming, in the case that, uh, we can't get food from other areas. And then the last thing is, um, about the tree contribution. Uh, Concord, as we know, has implemented a tree preservation bylaw that charges folks that take down any trees that are above a certain number of inches and, uh, charge them for that privilege. Um, and that goes to replanting trees. And I think that that's, just to give you an idea, the, the, up on Post Office Square, there were thousands of trees that were taken down that would have qualified for a tree hearing otherwise, uh, if they were along the street. Um, and we have the right as a municipality to engage in, um, tree preservation fees as well as anything we can do to prevent those. But I, anyway, so I just wanted to make note that there's going to be hundreds of trees gone here too and, uh, thirty thousand, um, gal, uh, excuse me, thirty thousand, um, pounds of, uh, carbon are absorbed in an acre of trees. And so on average, if you take the thirty thousand and divide it by the number of the five thousand, excuse me, the five tons per year of carbon by each car, what you're doing when you clear a site like this is you're adding like two or three cars just in the carbon footprint of the, um, absorption that's no longer going to occur. And then when you use the building materials, you're adding at least one car per site plus the, the garages, uh, two cars in each one. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair, I would just note that this is a very small site. The trees are in the woods and they're largely in the place that's wet, that isn't going to be built on. Um, if, you know, it's basically a house with a few trees around it. So it's not as if it's not, they're not taking down hundreds of trees, um, you know.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I guess I'm making the point that even on a 40B, even on a friendly 40B, I think that, uh, we're going to be talking about the sustainability plan in the future, just the importance of measuring the actual impacts so that we can see what the cumulative impact is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Danny Factor Eleven Davis wrote, I just want to briefly be, um, another voice in support of Katie's comments as far as bringing up the heat pumps versus, uh, natural gas issue and specifically bringing up the issue of the, uh, gas leaks on Prospect Street. I know it's become, uh, thankfully, very popular to be against a lot of these large, uh, natural gas projects, uh, the Kinder Morgan Pipeline, um, you know, other, uh, kinds of pipelines around the country. Um, but just to reiterate that, you know, it comes down to the real front lines of climate change is, uh, is house by house. And the fact that, uh, the town of Acton, um, particularly the Board of Selectmen is being concerned about this, you know, on the micro level is extremely encouraging. Um, and I would encourage, uh, the developer, and I apologize, we haven't, uh, met before. I'm one of the directors of Green Acton and I would encourage you to, uh, speak with us because we really want to have that conversation and hear about, you know, if, uh, you know, people who have concerns about, um, the, um, uh, heat pumps, uh, to be able to have that conversation, um, to educate us as well about your concerns. So I just want to let you know how encouraged that is and how pleased I am, uh, with what I hear from the Board of Selectmen. Thank you very much. No question.
Thank you, Danny. Bob?
So you've already spoken to this, but I just want to reiterate that Acton Community Housing Corporation met with Mr. Levine and voted to support the project and we are happy to support it.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else from the audience? Right. Uh, board members. What are you inclined to do? Um, in the way of, are you inclined to, if you're inclined to support this, um, I can put together a letter and you can tell me what things you want in the letter to emphasize or, um, I can rely on ACHC's letter and incorporate some of the comments, um, from the audience today.
That's what's mine to me and do we need a motion to have you sign the application as well?
Yeah, you need, I have to sign it. And then I think typically we submit some sort of endorsement with it, yeah.
So I would move to, um, approve or, um, I would move to approve the board, the chair of the Board of Selectmen signing the application for the 146 Prospect Street, um, Lip 40B application and to send a letter of support outlining, um, the comments heard tonight, um, from board members and, um, echoing the, uh, ACHC letter.
Katie Moose and Joan Seconds, any further comments, discussion?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. There was one question that I forgot to ask. It'd only take a second. I know it's probably not appropriate. But I said, did you sell a solar array on the house to Habitat for Humanity? Is that what that?
That's correct. That's what it was.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I didn't actually, we didn't sell it to them. We, because when we bought the.
You donated, uh, the equipment?
Yeah, I'm not making, let's get the record. I didn't make any money off of Habitat. When we bought the house, we had to buy out the solar agreement and then we then donated that to Habitat for Humanity. So they could put on more of their house.
There is a receipt from Habitat for your.
There is a receipt.
Your donation to a nonprofit excellent agency. Thank you.
Okay, so Katie Moose and Joan Seconds, any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
And I have some work to do. All right. Okay. Senator Eldridge, you're on. You have a choice. You can either sit there or, and stretch your legs or, your choice. Welcome.
Okay, well, good evening. Uh, thank you very much to you, Madam Chairwoman and the Board of Selectmen for having me for my annual budget update and, uh, early in the budget season. I did just want to begin my comments and say, sort of following up what, what Steve said about Dory Hunter is that when I was first elected to the House of Representatives, Dory was on the Board of Selectmen and just true, true public servant. And the project that I most associate with him is, uh, his efforts to get the Public Safety Building built. And it took a number of years or a couple of stops and starts with that, but that's keenly, keenly part of his legacy. So, um, I was very sad to hear of his passing. Um, I also just want to commend, uh, Steve Ledoux on the OPEB, uh, broadcast, uh, predictions. It looks very, very encouraging. I know that's an issue the board has come to legislature about, about, uh, those obligations. I've just handed you out a letter with my budget priorities. And I have my budget meeting with Senate Ways and Means Chairwoman Karen Spilka in Feb, late February. And the first thing I always focus on is, is the fact that even though revenues are up so far this year, that we still have a structural deficit. So I, I am an advocate to raise revenue. So on the, the first page, um, we'll continue to be an advocate to close corporate tax loopholes and tax breaks, something I've been the lead on in the legislature. Um, speaking about sort of local revenue, uh, enact to sustain the Community Preservation Act. So that's a bill that would allow the Department of Revenue to increase the, uh, fee that's paid whenever anyone refi- refinances their home. And, um, that would get the, hopefully the match back to fifty percent. Right now, I know it's very low. So I know that's a big, a big, big priority. Acton's done a terrific job in expending money of its Community Preservation Fund for affordable housing, historic preservation, open space slash recreation. And then the third item on revenues, um, supporting raising revenues in a number of ways, including, uh, the short-term rentals. I'm not sure how many short-term rentals there would be in Acton, but, uh, the, the push is to allow for a local option tax so that people, if people are using their homes to host people, that there would be a certain amount of revenue that would be kept locally. And I will say, one of the discussions, since the bill is in the committee I chair, that we're having is whether there should be a requirement that a certain amount of that money, the local revenue, be dedicated to, say, infrastructure or affordable housing or just have it be unrestricted. So certainly would, you know, like to get your views on that. Um, I continue to advocate for legislation like, uh, the, uh, the bottle bill to, uh, apply the five cents to bottled water and other, and juices. So that's legislation that's also been filed. On the budget front, um, first and foremost prioritizing local aid, especially education. So Chapter 70, uh, Chapter 90, road money, sped circuit breaker. Um, received a number of letters from school committees across the district I represent, really pushing to get the, not only the sped circuit breaker reimbursement up, but also the regional school transportation, uh, that often at the end of the day, those increases have a bigger impact in Acton, Boxborough than Chapter 70 reform, at least right now. Um, public transportation, um, have many conversations with Peter Berry about pushing for more parking at the South Acton Train Station. Appreciate the board's continued push on that. Um, and certainly advocate for state funding for that as well as to find ways to support the really impressive, uh, cross-town connect shuttle system that really began here in Acton that serves several of my towns. On the second page, in terms of budget priorities, maintaining funding for vital social safety net services, including programs to help the homeless, low-income families, at-risk children, those with disabilities and the elderly. Uh, respect to seniors, uh, the legislature, I expect, will, will increase, uh, perhaps by a dollar or two, the amount of money per senior that's funded, uh, to councils and aging to help with programming, especially relevant given the new location, uh, of the senior center. Um, or I'm sorry, what's it called now? It's called the Human Service Center. I'll, I'll have to work on that. Yep. The fourth item, the Foundation Budget Review Commission, is a commission that was chaired three years ago that looks to change Chapter 70 as well as funding for ELL students and special needs students as well as the fact that so much of a school budget's costs, uh, are taken up with health insurance costs. So it would look to, uh, reform the foundation budget, essentially Chapter 70, to increase in each of those areas. So the, the legislature made a modest increase in that area last year. I'm hoping we can do more than a modest increase uh, this year. And then hopefully if the millionaire's tax passes in November, then there could be a more dramatic increase in public education. Uh, fifth item is just general infrastructure, uh, transportation, water infrastructure, which is something I've been the lead on, higher education, libraries, public schools, including the discussion around elementary schools here in Acton. And the last item, which is really a priority not only for me, but I really think the entire Senate District, going back to my predecessor, Bob Durand and Pam Rizor, is protecting the environment. Uh, we're trying to get to one percent of the state's budget dedicated to the environment. In the budget that Governor Baker just proposed, it's, it's still at point six percent. So we're not at there, we're not there yet. The legislature hasn't accomplished that yet either. So I will be continuing to advocate for that as well as the discussion about water infrastructure, better supporting the Acton Water District and, you know, other entities to support water infrastructure with an emphasis on decentralized water infrastructure. So those are the budget priorities going into, uh, the budget season and I'm happy to talk about the budget, uh, the revenue items or any legislation that the committee, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen may, may have an interest in. Thanks again for having me.
Thank you, Senator Eldridge. Questions, comments from the board? Katie? I'll, I'll just ask you, you know, I know you always have something.
I've always got something. Uh, no, thank you for coming, Senator Eldridge and, uh, uh, for always advocating on behalf of, of, um, Acton in the legislature. You know, I, I, um, glad to hear sort of some of the bills that you're supporting that look, that look at alternative, um, forms of raising revenue. I know it's tough, um, considering that the speaker has said, you know, already said no to any new taxes and those have to generate from the House. So we go into a budget cycle, you know, without enough, um, at, at the get-go. So, um, anything you can do to push on that is great. I know it's hard to do from the Senate, but, um, just, just raising the, um, uh, you know, call for the need, um, is important. Um, you know, I, I prefer to see a broader base taxes than some of these kind of smaller, um, you know, ones that, that hit, um, lower income people harder, um, a lot of the time. But things like the community preservation revenue is great and looking at, um, uh, dealing with hosting services, I think, is important as well. And of course, closing loopholes as much as we can. Um, and thank you again, um, for kind of underscoring the need for supporting the sped circuit breaker as well as regional school transportation. As you mentioned, those often have a bigger impact here. Um, and I would also say, you know, anything you can do mid-year right now, it's looking, um, okay for not having any mid-year budget cuts. But in recent years, um, one of the first things that the governor seems to cut all the time, despite everybody supporting, you know, local aid and saying, oh, we're never going to cut that, is regional transportation aid. And, and it only hurts some of the districts, but it hurts them pretty hard. And so anything you can do to, um, push back on, on mid-year cuts to regional transportation aid are greatly appreciated. Again, um, that, uh, it's especially hard, um, mid-year to deal with all of a sudden getting, you know, less than what you anticipated. And when, you know, they're only coming in originally at, you know, sixty-seven or seventy percent reimbursement and then having that cut even further, it's, it's a big hit. Um, and I appreciate you looking at the, um, the Foundation Budget Review Commission's report. Um, I, you know, it'll be interesting to see and it might have some, you know, might actually shift some of the Chapter 70 funding away from Acton, um, just because we're a, um, a higher income district. Um, but I actually think that that's probably right in the long run. And if it's increasing, um, funding for, in particular, ELL services and, um, special ed, I think that that's important and that will, um, impact Acton positively considering sort of the, while still much smaller, or actually about state average for special ed, but much smaller, um, kind of percent of ELL students, there has been a huge increase in that over, you know, the past five or 10 years. Um, so anything that can be done to support communities, um, struggling with, with how to best support changing, um, their changing student population, I think, is great. So I actually don't really have any questions and just wanted to say thank you for coming and to, um, keep up the good work. And, oh, the only thing I would say is, uh, some of your, um, work on water infrastructure and when you came to the NAGOC hearing and, and spoke about some of the work you've done and trying to, um, work on the state, um, sort of oversight of water withdrawal, I think is important. And that's the level at which this is regulated. And so I would hope that we could partner with you on reforming, um, some of that, uh, current legis, or current laws around, um, how, um, withdrawals are determined and permitted, um, at the state level. But otherwise, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. If I could just follow up very quickly, just, just to be clear on the, um, thank you Katie for your comments on the, the Chapter 70 education funding. Just to be clear, it would not lead to a increase in Chapter 70 for Acton, Boxborough. Um, I think if anything, there, there could be a slight increase and then the increase is really ELL, special ed and health insurance, so.
Other board members? Joan?
Under veterans benefit, is that dependent on the number of veterans in Acton?
I think it is, yes. Yep. So it's, it's, however, James counts the veterans in town.
Okay. And then under mosquito control, is that dependent on the number of mosquitoes? Because I noticed that's about twenty thousand dollars more.
Thank you, Joan, for looking at that level of detail.
No, I don't need an answer.
Yeah, I don't think it's per mosquito. That's just my guess.
The Board of Health deals with that one, so I would ask them.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, I, I think the veterans benefits are, benefits under state programs.
Yeah, I think the veterans' benefits are, benefits under state programs that the town pays out ahead of time, and then the state reimburses us afterwards, so. I'm glad to see you focusing on environmental issues. The town has made sustainability one of its main priorities. There's a lot going on on climate control. I think MAPC has a forum coming up, is it going to be held here, on climate control? I thought I saw her.
Yes, it's coming up, I'll be there.
Okay. There are a lot of grants we get under the Green Communities Act and other kinds of grants. I think there was some money from MAPC to help pay for this gas leak study we had in town. That's a huge issue in town, so whatever you can do to keep funding those environmental grants would be very helpful. And I just had a question about the CPA. In this year's budget, actually, was there a language that said we would get an increase in state CPA funding if revenues came in at a certain level in this year's budget, as there has been in the past? And, you know, if the revenues, if that's so, if the revenues are at a level that might get us some more money down the road?
I think that's possible. I know the past couple of years, we've done that, and then there's been no remainder. So that's why I really want, like to see more dedicated revenue, but the House budget will come out in about two months, and then the Senate budget will come out in May. So certainly be advocating for that in the Senate budget. I don't know if, I, my guess is Governor Baker did not include it in his budget, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thanks for all your hard work on behalf of Acton.
Thank you. And if I could just follow up very quickly, just on the gas leaks, which Acton has been a very impressive leader. I am the Senate sponsor of what I see as the next wave on gas leaks, so it would require utilities to come up with a plan to seal the grade-three gas leaks, so the lower priority ones that are on our, mostly of our streets, as well as it would prohibit utilities from charging all of us for sealing those leaks. So making sure they don't get away with that. So the Senate has a Clean Energy Bill that I think will be coming out in the next week, and I expect that the, my gas leaks bill will be part of that, as well as solar, wind, energy efficiency provisions. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Chingsong, you anything?
No, just some quick comments. I wanted to thank you for coming, you know, doing your annual budget update, as well as, you know, for budget priorities that very clearly reflect the priorities of the town of Acton. And in general, you know, I think these are good budget priorities, especially the focus on, you know, protecting environmental and water resources. I think that's obviously been an issue that's been very important in town. And so, and so as far as that's concerned, I think one of the things that I learned during the NAGOC water hearing is, is really in view of how little options that we really have at the local level to institute controls and protect our resources in a way that, you know, makes sense. And so, you know, anything that you can do on that front to help return some control to the local level, I think would be a good thing. Anyway, thank you, and thank you, thank you again for, you know, all your hard work in this area.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Eldridge. I think, actually, it's amazing that my questions and comments have no overlap with any of my colleagues, which is unusual, maybe because I'm really off-base here. But I would want to say, anything you can do, working with the governor to, on mass transit, improving it, I mean, this is like, I think, I do think that people are dumping on him, and I happen to like him. You know, I'm not a Republican or Democrat, I'm not a partisan, so, but anybody who's working on something that I care about, including mass transit, I don't, it doesn't affect me much, but when I go into town, it makes a big difference, and I do get irritated if I find out I have to get off the red line to get a bus, and, you know, which defeats the whole purpose of the efficiency. But, you know, it's just essential to get people around jobs, to other things, and it would be wonderful to have a first-class mass transit system in our, you know, metro Boston area. So anything you can do, you know, I know you're in different parties and all that, but please, please, collaboration is the key. And then, I think, what was it? I know you, people mentioned about water infrastructure. I know that a topic came up during the NAGOC, I think it was reopen hearing, but it was about this whole issue of the public water suppliers and how they have registered rights, which are, you know, just, they're grandfathered, and they're not subject to environmental review and all the other constraints that exist with regard to permitted rights. And, you know, it would be great, you know, at the risk of ticking off our water district, it would be great if somehow you could get buy-in from the public water suppliers about, you know, sort of being subject to a little more scrutiny, because it obviously was a concern locally, and somewhat frustrating for people not to, I don't think that, at least in our area, the public water suppliers are going to be really flagrantly irresponsible, but, you know, that may not be the case elsewhere in the Commonwealth. And of course, water goes everywhere, so what happens elsewhere in the state has an impact on us. Okay, I have a question about, let's see, this zoning reform law. Every, I guess, every session, there's a new one, and I gather that this one is, I guess, being better received. I know the Mass Municipal Association isn't keen on it, and I'm about to become, they're having a meeting tomorrow, and I don't know if I'm supposed to go, but it's Mass Municipal Association's Regional Policy, whatever, Committee. But there, this is one of the issues they're looking at, is sort of the zoning reform, and also the governor's proposal, which, among other things, I guess, pretty notoriously is proposing changing, you know, it's an opt-in thing, you could change the vote on zoning amendments from two-thirds to bare majority, which I think Katie and I talked about, might not fly with our, you know, town, which is why, if it's going to be an option as opposed to mandatory, it would be a good thing. But the zoning reform proposal that you have, which I tried to read and kind of gave up, because it's kind of like the kitchen sink, it tested my patience and ability to stay focused. But I didn't know if I'm misunderstanding it and thinking that it's mandatory, or does it have opt-in provisions within it that would give all the 351 communities more leeway in deciding what they wanted to accept and what they didn't want to?
Yeah, no, zoning reform is something that I sort of inherited from my predecessor, Pam Rezor, to work on, and the Senate did pass a version of zoning reform last session. So it, there is something being worked out right now within committee, within the municipalities committee. I think what, sort of big picture is, there's everything from a look at housing production, which could, you know, could be in the category of inclusionary housing. So, you know, if a developer comes up with a subdivision, this board of selectmen or planning board could require that a certain number of those units be affordable, you know, by, by sort of municipal dictate. Then there's impact fees, so a clear formula, so when there is a development, you could charge a certain amount of money to a developer, that could be used from everything, from environmental impacts to sidewalks, to, you know, playgrounds, whatever, whatever you thought was appropriate. Then there's the proposal that would allow in-law apartments by right, which I know the town is mostly addressed. And then the fourth provision that seems to be most controversial, I would say more in really small towns and not necessarily Acton, is requiring that every town designate a certain area of town where there could be multifamily housing, recognizing at the end of the day, if you're really going to build affordable housing that's not subsidized, it's about, you know, building some apartments. So that's in the housing area. And then it would also, on the planning area, it would require a town to do a master plan every 10 years, and that master plan would be backed up by law. So in other words, if the developer came in with something that was contrary to Acton's master plan, it would be enforceable. So I think that would be something to be good for protecting open space and, you know, focusing on how you want a particular neighborhood to look like. And then there's the issue of transferable development rights. So if the town wanted to preserve, you know, a certain area of open space, but then in exchange allow, you know, West Acton Village or Kelly's Corner to develop, then you would be allowed to do that. So those are just a few examples. Janet, you mentioned the zoning change, so, yeah, the Governor Baker has filed that bill that would allow a town to pass a zoning change by a majority instead of two-thirds. I think what's important to note is, in the bill that the House, excuse me, the Senate filed, to get to that majority, you'd have to pass it by two-thirds. So at least, in my opinion, you know, it's local option, and then there would have to be a two-thirds vote to get to the majority threshold. But I understand people have concerns about that.
Okay. And then, I don't want to take too much time, because probably audience members want to ask questions, but I had a question about where the sanctuary community proposal stands. I mean, given that what has happened locally is we've kind of followed the police department's new policy, which was, is the result of some work involving citizens who were interested in the sanctuary community status, but that was kind of controversial, so anyhow. But I was wondering, what would be, I don't know where it stands, and then if perchance it became law, would it have an impact? Would it preempt what we have locally, or would it allow what we have locally to stand?
Yeah, so, very good news on the Safe Communities Act front, which I'm the lead Senate sponsor of, is that bill was reported out to the Senate today. So Wednesday is the deadline for most bills in all joint committees to be reported out favorably or unfavorably. So it was reported out to the Senate today. There's a little bit more of a challenge in the House, so I'm not sure what will happen to the House bill. But it was a compromise with the police chiefs, so it actually has some carve-outs that police chiefs wanted to have. So I would argue that Acton's policy probably goes a little further than the state proposal, and the Safe Communities Act would allow any town to go further, so I think Acton would be safe with its current policy, which really is a model for the state, and I really commend, especially Katie Green for her work on that and the Sanctuary Town Committee, including, I know Danny Factor in the audience. So the bill has been reported out, and unanimously, the Mass Police Chiefs has endorsed the bill, so that's very significant. And so we'll see what happens in the Senate. But, yeah, there's certainly been growing support for the bill.
Then two questions. One is, what is your position about recreational marijuana and local regulation? And finally, has there been any discussion about state income tax reform in view of what has happened at the federal level? There was, there was a lot of scrambling year-end of people trying to prepay their assessed property taxes, because they knew that they were going to be facing a limit. It's, you know, it's kind of an affluent community problem, but still, there are a lot of people in the Commonwealth who were affected by that law, so anyhow. I didn't know, so marijuana, and then, and then state tax, or income tax law?
Yes, so Janet, marijuana taxes, thank you for the soft, softball questions. So I, on the marijuana front, I was a strong supporter of question four, but, you know, is the legislation, that the legislature passed this past session, which I know Acton took action at a town meeting, was that there's an ability for a town to, you know, to regulate and ban the sale of recreational marijuana. So, you know, we preserve that option. I personally am concerned if a lot of communities limit that or prohibit that, because, you know, then it's hard to argue that it's truly going to remain a legal product. You know, the black market could continue to thrive, but obviously, that's up to every town or city. On the tax front, yeah, the, we have gotten a bit of a report on the potential impacts of the federal tax law changes. I can't speak to the property tax issue, but, you know, certainly I've been making a point, and that's why, you know, I highlighted the, some of the tax proposal ideas, including closing corporate tax loopholes, is if we do see billions of dollars in cuts to the state level that will impact potentially, you know, special education, which is partly, you know, federally funded, perhaps, you know, cuts to our roads and bridges or public transit system. So should we raise the revenue to close that gap, if you will? And I would certainly support that, but right now, we don't know the direct impact of those federal tax law changes.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, I'm going to open it up to audience.
I just wanted to say, real quick, just to clarify, Jamie, we didn't, we have not banned recreational marijuana at town meetings, right? Yeah, just a moratorium right now. And thank you for the news on the Safe Communities Act. It's great to hear, and it's worthwhile noting how many years you've filed that, and it's just starting to have momentum, but you're seeing it across the state with cities and towns adopting all kinds of welcoming or sanctuary policies, and just appreciate your support through that process.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Danny Factor, 11 Davis Road. Jamie, I have two questions. First of all, thank you for your leadership, as you've talked about particularly environmental issues, water issues, public transportation, sanctuary, and also recreational marijuana. Two questions. I appreciated your mention in the human services areas of funding for homelessness and low-income housing. Here in Acton, in towns around here, places that sometimes have a reputation for being wealthy towns, there's been more and more talk here and in other committees and around the town about poverty that exists in our area. For those of us who are social activists and work, I myself a public interest attorney, and, you know, other people in social services, there's more and more stories about people, you know, right here in our town who are vulnerable, who are housing insecure. There are many stories you can hear. I've told a story about a homeless man who I took into my living room for a whole summer, other residents of town who have taken in homeless youth, sometimes from dysfunctional families, particularly gay youth, you know, for example, having disputes with their parents. So we're hearing it from the schools as well. I had a conversation with the head of special ed a couple of years ago, and talked about a kid who literally didn't have a desk in his house at all. So what I wanted to ask specifically about, I assume some of this funding that you're working on are for our local housing authorities that deal with some of the most vulnerable people in town. And particularly, we in Acton and other towns have been dealing with this waitlist for public housing that seems to be, at the very least, not diminishing, and in many cases, growing larger and larger, to the point where we have people on waitlists for up to three, four years in town, and up to 10 years, if, you know, God forbid, you live in another town. I'm wondering if the funding that you're looking for public housing, since some of the increase has to go towards maintaining the existing infrastructure, which itself is growing, you know, older, does, when you look at the funding for public housing, does it come with a goal of making a measurable dent in the waitlist? And can you talk about a little bit if this, the funding that you're looking for for public housing is targeted towards a measurable change in the waitlist, to getting it down to near zero?
Yeah, thank you very much for your question, Danny, and your advocacy. And before I was a legislator, I served as chair of the Acton Housing Authority. You know, I think it's important to recognize that Acton, compared to most other suburban communities, goes above and beyond on building affordable housing, including low-income housing. That being said, you know, more needs to be done. So in terms of housing low-income families and individuals, there's a couple of approaches. In the budget, it's mostly, there is a line item for public housing authorities, mostly for maintenance, not for new housing. The two items in the state budget are really MRBP, which is the state version of federal Section 8, and so we've increased that from $30 million to about $100 million over the past three years. However, it was $120 million in 2002. So we're not even back to 2002 levels, which is when, you know, approximately when the income tax cut happened. I've also been the lead in the Senate on the Alternative Housing Voucher Program, which is for disabled individuals, and so we've gotten that to $5 million. So that's issued about 300 more vouchers statewide last year. 300 more vouchers for the whole state is 300 more vouchers for the whole state is clearly not adequate, so we need to do better there. And then the biggest item that would build new public housing, which obviously is up to each town or city housing authority, so it's up, ultimately up to the Acton Housing Authority, but it's the Housing Bond Bill. So unlike most other states, Massachusetts borrows a significant amount of money to build affordable housing, and the House of Representatives passed a $1.7 billion housing bond bill two weeks ago, and I think the Senate will, will take it up soon. And about 500 million of that 1.7 billion to be spent over the next five years is for public housing. And so it's really up to, you know, if the Acton Housing Authority, just like they did with Whittlesey Village in, in, off Satcham Way, off 2A, you know, if the Acton Housing Authority has a proposal, then the state, you know, could, can match it, and that's certainly a role for me to advocate for. So I don't know if that fully answers your question, but...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and I will relay that as I'm actually the liaison from the Acton Commission on Disabilities to the Acton Housing Authority. I, I just would encourage when this funding is done, if it can be tied to, you yourself say that sometimes some of this funding may only be enough, you know, for maintenance in some cases, and the amount of vouchers going up is, is very little. I think the more that this funding can be measurably tied to the amount of, of dent that it will make in the waitlist, it will educate people not also, only on, you know, how far we've come, but how far we need to go. Because I think there's a lot of people out there who don't know how, how big the problem is and how catastrophic the effect is. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah Fredericks, West Acton, and I'll just, I have a list of other comments and questions, but I'm going to just follow up with this particular one with the bond bill. I hope that it's not just a subsidy for developers. There's plenty of existing buildings that we could put deed restrictions on, that the state funding would really help do that quicker to get more people off the street. I think that that's an important change that we could make in that. I'm totally in support of raising taxes to support things that we want, in particular the CPA, the short-term rentals, raising taxes there, to, to, to bridge the gap on healthcare. If the, if they're decreasing our taxes federally and we can match that here locally, we're, it's more efficient to use that money locally in the state. So I'm totally in favor of having my taxes personally increased. I do, though, think that we have to address the regressive nature of our taxation system because the middle class is being driven out. I have more and more people that are moving from Acton out to New Hampshire because they just can't afford the taxes. So I think that we need to change the way that things are taxed. People are taxed and income are taxed. I had a question on the environmental funding because if that's increased, I think, I'd like to know where that's going because largely I've seen environmental spending focused on how to build more stuff, a little bit more greener, as opposed to actual preservation. So I want to know if that 1% is actually going to preservation.
Sure, yes. So, so there, there's a variety of, of light items that, that is representative of what that 1% would, would go to. So it's, probably the most important one is the enforcement of our environmental laws, so the DEP Administrative Light Item, which has been severely cut back by, by Governor Baker. DCR, so our state parks, which most of our state parks actually now have absolutely no staff. Open space preservation or purchase, so if a town like Acton can apply for a self-help grant. And then the Department of Ecological Resources, DER, so preserving our, our, you know, wildlife habitat. So those are the four main areas that the 1% budget goes to.
Thank you, that's helpful. I love the idea of the Section 8s getting more funding because that gives people the option of where they want to live and it's very fast. It happens quickly. It's not about, maybe we'll build something later. I addressed the regressiveness. The mosquito control, I just want to put a, to say that we need something that's more natural. They're talking about GMO bacteria spores that they're basically spraying all over everybody from helicopters. They dumped something like 250 pounds of this crap in, in Boxborough last year. I just wanted to make a note that the Climate Forum is to accommodate climate change. The MIPC, this is an ongoing problem I've had with MIPC. As much as we like them and how technically astute they are, they're not facing the limits on the environment and talking about reducing the human impact on climate. They're talking about building dams and, and accommodating climate. I want to thank you, you didn't mention this, but the green portfolio, the renewable energy portfolio has come a long way and I, I credit you, Jamie, for that. You've been right in the lead in that and I really appreciate your change in focus in that. It's been fantastic. It's supposed to be making more of a carbon footprint. We're talking about reducing our carbon footprint, I really appreciate that. The smart growth bills, I want to make it clear to the public and anybody in this room that there's two different things going on. There's the overhaul of zoning and then there's the H07, H4075, which is the reduction of the vote down to 51%. And so I think that it's important to understand, there's two things. There's the fast-tracked one that's focused on opt-in, and I want to make sure, from your words, because we haven't gotten word back from our town lawyer, that's entirely opt-in, is that correct?
Yes, that, that's, well, I'm speaking to the bill that was filed on the Senate side is opt-in. I can't speak to the governor's bill. I haven't looked at it closely, but the, the original Senate bill is opt-in.
Can you let us know if there's anything in there that isn't opt-in?
Sure.
And it's my understanding that 40B was opt-in at one point, so let's, I'll be careful about what we think opt-in is, that once you're in, then things can change really quickly. I wanted to make note about the percentage growth that Acton has experienced is much greater than the region or the state. So we have been doing our share. And in terms of inclusionary zoning, I feel like something's got to change in some of those words so that the towns that aren't doing their share can really be forced to do their share because they easily opt out by just keeping their land prices so high. So developers come and hit us even more. So the TDR, the Transfair Development Rights, I feel like forcing this upon the villages is an issue of environmental justice. So you have people that are living in mansions next to huge swaths of conservation land that then have the time to go to town meeting and vote on things, they're going to be forced on the people that are working two or three jobs, living in $250,000 condos, already squished in with no green space. So I think that we've got to be careful about when we talk about inclusionary to make sure that that's an environmental ju, environmentally just. Let's see, I think I might have done everything on my list. Oh, yes, about the gas leaks, I want to thank you for that effort because the last one they passed was kind of painfully weak and it didn't give any teeth to the towns to enforce. So I would love to, to have that enabling language put in there. And lastly, the sanctuary work, so thank you very much for that. And although you didn't name my name, I was right in the lead on that. Thank you.
Forgive me, thank you.
So, and, but Illinois just passed a more progressive sanctuary bill than what Safe Community Act offers, so you might be able to, I, I realize that there's, it's difficult to get things passed in the House once you've passed them and that maybe you're compromising to get there, but I just want to let you know that when we were talking about sanctuary, there was some comments about how it would, it's not really allowed to do these things, but the governor signed the bill and so I think that that could be used for some ammunition there. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
Anybody else from the audience? Anne.
I wanted to thank you for supporting the libraries, how's that? Something new and different, but I also want to say that when you level fund budgets, that's like a cut. And so I would like to see the budget, library budgets return to their former glory, I think it's 2002, perhaps?
Yep.
When it was nicer? But we will continue to fight to keep our libraries sound and safe and sound. My other question is the, the ballot question. Has the tax, sales tax reduction got to the ballot question?
The adequate number of signatures have, have gotten, have been collected that the sales tax cut could be on the ballot, so there's a negotiation between those who also advocate for the minimum $15 an hour minimum wage and paid family medical leave, that all three of those can be addressed by the legislature.
That would be better, much better.
I agree. Thank you, Anne.
Anybody else in the audience? Questions, comments for the Senator? Ooh, take this opportunity to get out of here. Thank you very much, Senator Eldridge, for coming and subjecting yourself to, to our grilling. No, it's always a, it's a very useful session for us to find out what's, what's going on and also have our questions answered about exciting things like recreational marijuana, but, but no, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
No, thank you. This just reminds me how issues-driven, you know, both elected officials and the general public in Acton are. So thank you very much, I appreciate having me.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have Kelly's Corner. Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Discussion is the Adam Winstanley Project. I don't know if he's here, but I see Kelly's Corner Committee people plus our, our senior planner. Andy, welcome, and if you'd like to do introductions, that'd be great, and then take it away.
I'm Andy Brockway, I'm Chair of the Steering Committee for the Kelly's Corner Improvement Initiative. With me to my immediate right is Barbara Green from Winstanley Enterprises and then Katie Enright from Howard Stein Hudson Engineers and Planners. And they're here as representatives of part of the team working in conjunction with Stop and Shop, looking at the possible redevelopment of the Kmart parcel, of which, just to clarify, Stop and Shop actually owns. So what, what I'll do is I'll give a very brief overview of what's, what's going on within the Kelly's Corner initiatives overall, and then I'll turn it over to Barbara and Katie and they can talk more in particular about their efforts and sort of ultimately what they're, we're trying to achieve, at least for tonight. As you may recall, back in April 2016, we came to town meeting with two articles relating to Kelly's Corner. One was for infrastructure improvements, the other was for revisions to zoning bylaws. The infrastructure improvement article passed, the zoning did not. Just quickly on the infrastructure, that design work for that is going forward. In fact, today, the 25% design package for Mastioti was submitted, so we've reached an important milestone in that project as of today. When the zoning did not pass, there was still active interest in a number of parties across town about seeing what we could do to continue sort of the efforts to re-improve Kelly's Corner. At the, towards the end of the effort in 2016, we did speak with Winstanley, but it was sort of a little bit, too little bit, too late in terms of going to the town meeting in 2016. Fast forward to about three quarters of a year or so ago, we had more contact with the Winstanley team and as the steering committee, we started to meet with them to discuss the possibility again about, in particular, the Kmart site. Back in September and December, we organized a group meeting with representatives from various committees in town and with the Winstanley team to discuss ideas about the project. And so in particular, some of the committee representatives were the Finance Committee, Economic Development Committee, Acton Community Housing Corp., the Design Review Board, Planning Board, and at one of the first meetings, at least Acton Housing Authority was there. And so we've had two of those meetings and the idea again was trying to broaden the outreach initially amongst the representative committees in town to get some input. And then ultimately going forward, I think, and Barbara and Katie can talk more about this, they will, the outreach will become more toward the, the general public and they can talk a little bit about that process. And so part of what we're here tonight is that in order to sort of go through this effort, we're hopeful that we can put, again, some zoning bylaw revisions to the town in this time for a special town meeting in the fall, this fall 2018. So that's sort of the general background of where, where they are, and without further ado, I'll let them sort of go ahead.
Hello, I'm Barbara Green and I am, I'm an asset manager with Winstanley Enterprises. I'm also an Acton resident and I've been working with them for about 23 years. We're based in Concord, Massachusetts, so right next door, and we're a family-owned business. We're very well-capitalized though, we, you know, even though we're, we're relatively small in terms of staff, we're pretty deep in our experience. We've been developing properties on a, pretty much a community-based basis since 1991. And the reason why I've been there so long is because they are a company of high integrity and also a, a company that works with the communities and tries to, you know, get input and build to the design guidelines that are put in place by the communities. Because of that, we have developed over the last dozen years or so a relationship with the Stop and Shop Company, going back to a project that we first did in Norwich Town, Connecticut, which was a defunct shopping, a mall, like a strip mall, similar to, it was an interior mall where all the stores were in the interior and it had lost most of it. It was similar to the Chemsford, the old Chemsford Mall before they redeveloped over there. A lot of the stores had gone vacant, but there was still quite a bit of sentimentality by the people who had, who had watched it when malls were new and they had walking clubs there and that, you know, the elderly would go there in the winter to get some exercise. So we tried to, you know, work with the community in Norwich Town. They even had a, a following, we found out, a following on Facebook, a page for the Norwich Town Mall that had people going back to like the late 60s and early 70s, we, that still kept in touch even though they had moved away. So we worked with those communities, with those interest groups to, to try to maintain, you know, what it is that they wanted in the mall. We, we created, we cut down, actually cut down the size of it, which is something that we've tended to do in a couple of projects we've done with Stop and Shop, similar to the, again, Chemsford was another Stop and Shop. It used to be a Chemsford Town Center, which is on Boston Road across from the Chemsford Library. We completed about three years ago, a, redeveloped a strip center there that was, it was about 70,000 square feet, the, the Purity Supreme, which it was also owned by Stop and Shop, the land. There was a purity supreme in there that had moved out and it became vacant, it was, there was a Marshalls and then they ended up vacating their store as well. But it was right in the heart of Chemsford Center and Stop and Shop had built down the road a brand-new store, as well as a number of other new retailers down the road, that more big, big box stuff. And the town really wanted to make this, since it's in their center, wanted it to stay a part of the community and they were, had just, not just, but the Bruce Freeman Trail was going through there and they also had a master plan that they had done for the town to create more walkability, to create some housing there, to bring in some retail to support the community that lived in the area. So we, that was another one where we came in and we actually cut back the size of the, of the project, property, cut the back end off of it, made it more manageable in size and we brought it down to about 42,000 square feet and then put in some service-related and restaurants for the community there. And then they're just waiting for funding from the state for the town there where they can put in, be, another portion of their walkability. They have a, a walking path along the Beaver Brook there that will go along the end of our project. our project. So we created some outside space there where people could sit on the patio and listen to the brook, and we cleaned up along the brook and a lot of the invasives. So, that's the kind of work that we did. That was the second project we did with Stop and Shop, and I could go on, there were some other ones that we did. So, we formed a relationship over the years where, oh, and by the way, they had a master, master plan in Chemsford for that, the Chemsford downtown area, that we worked within those guidelines to make sure that the design worked. We spent many, many meetings with various special interest groups in the town to try to incorporate the, the needs that each one of those would have. And I think, you know, we came up with a pretty successful plan that most folks are happy with. You can't please everyone, obviously, but we did try to stay in front of it and get input in front. So, Stop and Shop, on this particular project, they do own the, the property. It was master lease to, it is master lease to Kmart. They've been, they will be there for a period of 45 years, so pretty well entrenched in the, in the project, but they will not be, the lease will not be renewed at the end of it, which it expires in November of 2021. So, we are doing a joint venture with Stop and Shop on that land, on that project, to try to come up with something that works for the community. And what we would like to do, and what we've started to do through some of the, the community boards here, is to try to get some input. We know, I, I had been to some of the meetings for the rezoning initiative that was not passed, so I do understand that, you know, there are concerns, and would like to address the concerns, would like to get out into the community, have a, have an area where we can put information on what's happening, so that people aren't fearful, that things are being shoved down their throat. We would like to get on social media, we've, I know that even my neighborhood is on a, on a social, social media group, it's very, very active, and there's great information that's shared on there. So, I've only been here about three or four years, so I love the collaboration in the community, and, and would like to be able to, to use that, to allay fears, to bring in input. We, right now, have two, two companies that are, that are putting together proposals for us for a community outreach, bringing in some ideas, and we should have more of a plan coming together within the next couple of weeks, of how we will reach out to the community and get their input, and, and provide feedback as well. So, I think those are a, a couple of the things. So, community involvement is very important to us. We know that it can make the process either, it's, it's never easy when you have change coming in a community, especially for something that's been there so long and does serve the community. But we would like to create a development that does continue to serve the community in, in ways that will work. And the fact that you do have a lot of plans already in place, and a, and a very vocal community groups, that I think we can come up with something that will work for everyone. We do need, obviously, a change in the zoning, and we have been, you know, collaborating and working with some of the various boards and with the planning department to see how to best go about that. So that's why we're here, is to ask that there be an initiative to put, to put it on the, a special town meeting in the fall, to allow us to move forward. We don't want to find that we come to, you know, it's 2020, and we have a year left on the lease, or worse, that Sears has come in and closed the Kmart prior to that, we see that in the news all the time, more Sears have just closed, Burlington's closing, and, and Kmart, they've already had several rounds of store closing. So, the worst thing would be to have them come in and say they're shutting it down, and then to have a building where there's no, no well-thought-out collaborative plan in place. It takes time to get people's input and to put the good ideas, you know, together, so that's why we're asking for it now.
Just briefly, Katie Enright, I'm an engineer with Howard Stein Hudson. Our office is in Chemsford. As Barbara and Andy said, we've been working collaboratively with the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, and also working with, or, or following the traffic consultants' improvements to 27 and 111, to make sure that kind of our vision fits into the improvements that are coming. Just briefly, there's a kind of a cartoon bubble drawing that's up before you today. This is kind of our initial thoughts, is how a redevelopment would be laid out on this site. It incorporates different elements, commercial elements certainly along the, the lot frontage. We have a small frontage area along 111 with a larger frontage area. Sorry, what, I'm sorry, Mass Ave at the top, we have a smaller frontage, and Main Street towards the bottom, we have a larger frontage area, with commercial space along the street frontages, and then interior, trying for some commercial space where there's some visibility, and also looking at multifamily housing, with a Main Street-type layout. So to provide an area to come through the lot, to provide some walkability, to provide some pedestrian green space throughout. This is just a very early drawing as to something that we were thinking about. As the plans develop, and as we seek community outreach, the, the idea is that, looking towards fall town meeting, if you're able to support that, would be to, to set up multiple community outreaches where we can talk about and develop the design further, working with architects and myself, to, to look towards the process and, and come up with some renderings of what this project may be. Also, continue to work with your planning department to modify and revise the zoning that was previously put before the town, to, to fit a potential redevelopment of this specific site. And essentially work by providing a lot of information to the town. We're looking to provide community input, whether it be sending letters to certified butters, posting notices to have public hearings and working sessions here, but really providing the community with a place where they can go to for information related to this project, ask questions, and feel a part of the process coming through until the fall. And as Barbara said, the reason we're doing it now, and we're looking to do it quickly, is, is, is obviously, we know that the lease, right now, on the books is through 2021, but as you notice every other week, there's a new list of Sears Holding and Kmart companies and facilities that are, are going out of business. So it's very important that we be able to hit the ground running if and when something were to happen to the store, or until 2020, 21, and make sure that we have a plan in place to succeed, so that this lot is, is not left empty for any significant amount of time. So, with that, thank you for your time tonight, and we hope you'd be able to support that.
Okay, so if I understand, the bottom line here is that you're really looking for us ultimately to authorize a special town meeting in the fall, for consideration of the zoning that failed, what is it, 2016 anyhow?
Yeah, yes, that's ultimately the purpose of tonight's meeting.
Okay, I don't know if board questions, comments, Katie?
Yeah, so Andy, my first question is the zoning that was brought forward in 2016 obviously applied to more than just this lot, so is the thought going forward for revised zoning to focus it just on this parcel, or would it still be broader in Kelly's Corner? In which case, are there plans among the Kelly's Corner Committee to, you know, sort of have these discussions publicly, not only about what and how the Kmart lot might be redeveloped, but how other parcels could be as well?
So, the zoning would imply for everything within Kelly's Corner, with the one caveat, that there are four parcels as of today, that under the zoning that we were talking about would enter into, would be allowed to enter into a master planning, special master planning process. And they have to be of a certain size, and they have to have a certain street frontage, and there are some reasons for both those. And so, out of those, which is the Kmart parcel, the Roche Brothers parcel, what is kind of the collective behind CVS, I think is the other one, and maybe there are only three, if there's another, forget it. But, the, so those are collectively the ones who could even enter into sort of the larger master planning process. There would also be those, some changes to the buy-right sort of ones that couldn't enter into it. But regardless, the zoning is applied across the board, so it's not just only for the Kmart parcel, and, so, the idea would be though, that because the Kmart parcel is the most realistic one to be developed in any reasonable amount of time, that to under, and in part because it's an important parcel within the overall district there, that trying to understand what can make that work, and see how that can apply to other sites. And so, we don't, we're not designing it around, the zoning wouldn't be designed simply around the Kmart parcel.
Yeah, and I think it's just important in this process not to just do community outreach about what or how the Kmart parcel might change, but, you know, make sure you're engaging the other owners as well in the area, and, and talking to the community about how other parcels could change in the future as well. And then I think it's helpful to also understand what might happen and what, you know, I don't know if you guys would do a development or partnership with Stop and Shop if there isn't revised zoning, but what that kind of development would look like, because I think people forget that there's zoning in place already. So, it doesn't mean that if we don't change the zoning, that nothing's going to happen. These parcels are very likely going to be redeveloped regardless, it's just if we have new zoning, we, we might be able to, you know, it, it's going to have a different result. And so I think it's important to understand what those kind of differences are, you know, what, what's sort of the, you know, what's allowed right now, and what might happen under the status quo, and then what could happen under, you know, the proposed revisions. And I know there was some of that in, in the last go-around, but I think kind of emphasizing that a bit more is, is helpful to understand, and to understand as well.
Yeah, I think part of it's not just whether they're redeveloped or not, but how they get redeveloped. And so, in the zoning bylaws, there's a strong emphasis about having a master plan review process, that would allow the town to have much greater input on it, what things look like. And to give, as an example, to the new three sort of condos or townhouses, whatever you want to call them, that are going up across the Gulf Station. Those are not within Kelly's Corner, and so they, those are by right, and so, I, without commenting directly, those would not, they, those would have gone under a review process, under a larger master plan review process. So, it's important to understand that there's a number of things going on beyond simply density or, or use.
Right, exactly. So I think that's the kind of stuff that it's helpful to make clear early on in the process, again, because I think some of that was discussed at town meeting, but, but as one of you noted, you know, it's, when people are faced with the idea of change, it's scary, and you might think, well, if I don't vote for this change, then everything will stay as it is, and we just know that that's not true, because development's happening all around us in, in our community. And I, I don't think these parcels are just going to stay how they are, especially if, you know, the Kmart ends up closing, or, you know, frankly, any of those areas around there. So, I think that's good to talk about. And otherwise, I just wanted to say thank you. I, you know, went to one of the early meetings this fall with you guys, and I just appreciate you involving different boards and committees and stakeholders early on, and, and really having a plan to involve the community early on as well. I think there's some interesting opportunity, and I was happy to hear sort of the diversity of committees that, that you're including. They represent, you know, a lot of the important stakeholders in town, so I think that's great. So thank you for coming tonight.
Peter?
I'm, I'm a member of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. I'm glad to see, this is the first time I've actually seen this bubble concept, and I'm glad to see that it's included more commercial concept in the interior of the site rather than just out in the front. So, it is evolving based on input that the committee's been providing, and, and hopefully the community will provide over the next few months. I, I just want to reiterate Andy's and Katie's comments that Kmart is not going to be there. Change is inevitable. The zoning changes are intended to allow the town to shape what the future site might look like, rather than allow it to be developed under the current zoning, which has led to the whole disjointed design of the entire Kelly's Corner neighborhood, which is very unfriendly to people who walk and visit businesses by means other than automobiles. We, we will see more CVSs, we'll see more TD Bank Norths if, if we don't change the zoning, and the concept of Kmart is going away, so what's going to be there in the future, that's the question. The concept of bringing residential development into Kelly's Corner is intended to bring more life to, and make it a much more attractive town center, that will draw a lot more people to businesses, and hopefully restaurants, and other kinds of amenities that the people in town are looking for, as well as bringing life to, again, to the, to the neighborhood by having people actually live there, rather than just these large retail and various other establishments. So, I would encourage the board to make a decision relatively early, to have a special town meeting in the fall, maybe look for a date when, when the auditorium's available, and make that decision early, so that the committee and the developer can move forward with their community forums, and get input, and refine this design with confidence that at least the issue's going to be addressed. We, we, we lost the two-thirds vote by, I think we got 63% of the vote instead of 66% of the vote in 2016, and the committee's been working very hard to address the issues that the citizens raised, the voters raised at that town meeting, and try to respond to them in a manner that will answer their questions, and, and gain the kind of support that we need to get this through. Thank you.
Ching Sun?
So I guess in general, I want to echo Peter and Katie's comments on sort of moving forward with the zoning changes, and, and sort of, you know, putting them in front of the town, and doing so in a timely manner, as well as, you know, having the increased outreach to really talk about what's going to, what's going to happen with the future of the site, which I think is obviously very important. But, I wanted to sort of zoom out a little bit, and talk a little bit about a larger reason and concept as far as why I think there's been some issues surrounding the Kelly's Corner zoning, as well as, as well as this site and this specific redevelopment in general. And I think that one of the things that's happening is sort of as a, as a developer and as a group that's interested in, in, in redeveloping this parcel, as well as the town center in general, you develop a distinctive vision for how the town center and how you want this part, and specifically this parcel to look and to feel. And while I think that's good and useful, not everyone is going to agree with the vision that you present. And I think that was a, a big reason behind the failure of the 2016 zoning, and I think that it would behoove you at least to take into account, you know, an, an altern, at least one, if not more, like fairly sizable differences in terms of a vision for the site, as well as Kelly's Corner in general. And so when you present that, to present it to people as, as, you know, this is what we think would look good, but, you know, you would have other options, and you could really redevelop this site, or the town center, in ways under this zoning that, and as well as, you know, specific plans that look and feel different, that have different uses, that focus on different things that are important to the community. And so I think that, that at least pushing that to a little bit wider extent will help not only get buy-in from people, but also show that, show that you have, you have taken this. this under, you know, different, under consideration and understand that different things are important to different people. And so I would guess I would just urge you to zoom out a little bit and to think about, think about the vision that you're presenting in, in the specifics for the Kmart site, but also for Kelly's Corner as a whole, and understand that, you know, perhaps the presentation of an alternative vision or two would really help people understand sort of what's possible and help, and help really push along the process for getting this done and, you know, and sort of, yeah, that's my general comment.
Joan?
I would agree with Ching Sung on that. I think we need an alternative to what's being presented so people can see what the possibilities are.
Anybody else?
I would echo what's already been said. I think from the last time we attempted this, I, I do remember there was a lot of fear mongering. There were a lot of assumptions about the worst case scenario that would be possible under the revised zoning. And I think that unfortunately, even if the actual zoning doesn't, wouldn't allow for those things, I think people need to have sort of an understanding visual, sort of visual way of what actually the zoning's going to be, how it's going to change things. I mean, it gets to what Katie was talking about, what is possible under the existing zoning, so that you can understand why it's important to change the zoning, so that we omit the downsides of our existing zoning format. But, and, and then also to address these, the concerns that some people had that we were going to have high rises in the middle of the Kelly's Corner Plaza. There was just, I, I sensed that a lot of that got traction and unfortunately caused enough concern or uncertainty about the, the proposed zoning changes that people were reluctant to support it. I mean, we, it was very, very close. I mean, we just were just shy of two thirds. We had a majority, but that wasn't good enough. And I would, I mean, I'm prepared to vote with the board to authorize a fall town meeting, a special town meeting to reconsider, have another opportunity to reconsider this because I think Kelly's Corner has been a focus of a lot of discussion, starting with our most recent master planning process. And gradually, we've kind of realized that we have to make some not very exciting infrastructure changes, but this is all, the zoning is all of a piece if we want to make some sort of transformation of Kelly's Corner, which seems to be what, what a lot of people want. I mean, we need to address the, the flow, traffic flow, and then we just need to deal with the aesthetics of what people see when they're stuck in traffic in Kelly's Corner, which is why I think it's become the focus of a lot of negative attention, because people do get stuck there and then you look around and you think, boy, this is really not what we would like to see. So, but I'm glad that you recognize that, that doing outreach and, and taking comments is important. I think that the concern about alternative visions, I think that will come when, as you work through things, maybe through discussions with people about their concerns. But it just, I think that once you have, you have something in place, I think that you'll probably, you'll address all, a lot of issues. I mean, it's not going to, you're never going to be able to please everybody, but you know, you can please reasonable, you can persuade reasonable people that what you're proposing to do is, is reasonable. I don't envy you. And Andy, you know, I, I think at the end of the last effort, you, you must have been exhausted because I know it was a lot of meetings, a lot of just talking. And I, I shared your disappointment, I think a lot, a number of us did, that all that work was for seemingly not, but I think now you've had a chance to go back to it and improve it, recognize lessons learned, I guess, from that effort. So, but I don't have anything else to say. I am willing to move forward with it. So, and I thank you all for sticking with it. And I'm glad we're now engaging the property owners in the discussion because, you know, the Kmart Plaza has been also within Kelly's Corner, the subject of a lot of discussion, all kinds of fantasies, which, you know, sort of hinged on having some option, opportunity to do something there. So now we have it. So now the time's to move. Okay, if there are no other questions on the board, audience members.
I think we're talking about two things here. We're talking about the master plan for Kelly's Corner, which took in the lots, the sizes, the frontage, which the Kmart lot was one of the, one of them, and also the other one behind CVS and then Roach Brothers. And I'm not, as you say, I'm not sure which the other one was. That was the zoning that failed. And when we did that, we weren't, we just put up some plans for Kmart. We weren't really sure that Kmart was going to come to fruition. I voted for that. I also voted for the other, the infrastructure changes. I've come to look at the Kmart lot as something that should be separated from the others because I don't think that we should have, it's a, it's our last biggest commercial lot in town. And therefore I think it should be, have a commercial use rather than a residential use. And I know that people make more money off of housing than they do off of other kinds of commercial things, but frankly, Concord wouldn't let something like this go down in Concord, but we can have it in Acton, but that's beside the point. But I think you should think of something like, let's have a hotel there with a restaurant or something like that. Let's, you know, think out of the box. Let's try not to think only of housing with little commercial things stuck underneath. Does Acton Medical want to move? Has anybody asked Acton Medical if they would want to move? Has anybody asked them if they would think that moving to where Kmart is now would be a good thing and you will build them a lovely, lovely place like when Stanley has built all this stuff in Concord for all those doctors? I mean, let's, let's try to expand our thoughts and let's try not to lose our commercial tax base so readily without first going through some sort of further analyses.
Tara Fredericks West Acton. I think Ann and I agree on something. Yay. So it's our last biggest lot. That's how important this is. I think that there are three options. There's the what can we do with the current zoning? What could we do with some new zoning? And then buying it. If we owned that lot, we could decide what's going on it. A community center with some small shops, some housing, or even Kmart. And then maybe some, a community center or something else in front of it. It's according to the manager at Kmart, they are one of the top 10 Kmarts in the United States. They said that we're not going anywhere unless we're forced. If we bought that under eminent domain, a friendly eminent domain, and paid them the market rate, the Kmart rent would pay for that, I believe. I need some help with staff to help me prepare that estimate. And then we could decide, like in Willow Central, that beautiful little place that we had on tax, tax lien, we owned that. And so we could dictate what it was and what it looked like and what level of housing it was going to be. We could control it. Then we'd be, it wouldn't be profit motivation. It would be the community's motivation in deciding what goes there. Now, relative to this infrastructure, the, if we did nothing except for keep Kmart there, the infrastructure changes would reduce the amount of traffic by 70 something percent. Just think about that. So the reduction in the traffic will be a community resource that I don't think we should be given away so lightly. So I urge that whatever planning effort, have the option of buying it to decide because once we, if we rezone it, the price is going to be two or three times what it's worth now. Now is the best time to buy it so that we can control it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Questions? Anything else from? All right. Yeah, I guess we should just, if we want to discuss the prospect of having a special town meeting.
Sure. I mean, I'd support, I think we've been having regular fall town meetings. It makes sense to have another. The only thing I would say, and actually Peter, you might know, is I, I can't remember the timing of any of the school stuff, but it's probably worth checking to, just to make sure that they're not considering some sort of fall winter town meeting that might be related or required for their building project, just so that we time things, so we're not dealing with, the last time I chaired and we had like six town meetings because I'd like to not do that again.
The, you know, the design was funded, so we're moving forward with hiring. The school building committee is moving forward with hiring a designer and a, and a project manager. And the next thing that will come before town meeting will be when the design's complete and they're looking for funding for the, the new schools. So that, that is, the earliest that's going to be is the spring of 19. And we're not sure we're going to make that, so.
Okay, good. Okay, so then otherwise I'm supportive and I would, I, I don't know. I mean, it's a little odd to do it without a specific date, but we can, I don't know if you had.
It's very hard to find dates. We'll find.
Yeah, so I can make a motion right now just to authorize a town manager to look at dates for a special town meeting in the fall.
Katie Moos and Joan seconds. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Great. Thank you very much, all of you. And next item is Kelly's Corner. It's related to Kelly's Corner, but this is for our, our, really our discussion. It's just proposed input to Mass DOT. The Kelly's Corner Committee has provided some draft comments and what I would suggest is, as always, because I write, I have some tweaks that I would propose, but I don't know if people on the board had other suggestions of things they wanted to include in the letter, the draft letter. I think that the draft letter, you know, it really covers the issues of, you know, mobility, safety, sort of, and also the historic preservation piece at the end. Yeah, Katie?
Yeah, my only question, Kristin, is probably for you, and it's about the, the light now that we're proposing on Charter and Mass Ave, that additional light. And I just had a question just because it seems so close, that light there as well as the kind of main intersection light. So I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about that. I mean, I understand I go through that intersection enough, that getting off Charter Road can be difficult, but is having two lights there really that important and advisable?
So one of the main issues that was brought up was about site distance.
Yeah.
And safety, trying to exit Charter Road and also for cars that are coming, you know, heading west. And so GPI looked at the issue and they indeed thought that essentially the distance between when you're coming out and how far you can see a car coming at you does not meet essentially the standards. And so they have met with Mass DOT and it does meet standards in terms of the distance from the next signal.
Okay.
But all of the proposed signals are essentially working together. So it's a smart signal system where they all talk to one another and it would be coordinated. So essentially the improvements that the proposed signals would make, take into account future development, including a proposed zoning change for Kelly's Corner, total redevelopment of the Kelly's Corner site, Kmart site in terms of additional traffic. And what we're seeing with this whole signal system is out, going, looking out to 2036, we're looking at capacity improvements of 58% in the PM commute and I believe it's 45% improvement in the morning commute. So they are all working together and there's some pretty significant capacity improvements there.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, no, I was just, like I said, they just seem very close together, but I also know making that left out of there is terrifying sometimes because you never know who's coming over that little hill. And I almost prefer it at night when at least most people have their headlights on.
Katie?
Yeah.
Sorry, can I add just one thing to?
I didn't know you were still there.
Yeah, can I add one thing to what Kristin was just saying? So the, the improvements, we're adding the light there at Charter Road. There's also going to be a light now down by the CVS, which I know a lot of people were concerned about. And a lot of these things are coming out of reviews with Mass DOT. And in relationship to the Charter Road light, one of the things also is that it's not an isolated incident. So you were asking about sort of the connection between that light and the light, for example, at 27. But they're also adding another lane. And so, so, so there's not just simply light changes into the design in terms of adding lights, but there are also changes in terms of the lane configuration and use. And so all those together are sort of one, sort of integrated design.
And I don't know if it's appropriate at this stage, but have you guys talked to the district about providing a letter of support? Just because I know they, they were kind of the ones who brought up the Charter Road light and it would impact their campus. And so I think it's worthwhile, I mean positively, you know, in terms of walkability and hopefully traffic improvements. So I don't know if you've approached them for a letter of support as well?
We have not, but we can. The letters essentially go out to specific boards and committees and we've also requested specifically that it go out to the Historical Society, which they did, in addition to the Historical Commission. But we can extend it ourselves to them and they can send it off to.
Okay. The letter from Mass dot goes out to the Historical?
So our, our engineers, GPI are required to send out that request for comment for the early environmental coordination. And so, but we as a town can of course ask other.
Okay.
You know.
And so that did go to the Historical Society and Historical Commission? So they can weigh in on that part of it as well?
Exactly. And this is really, this is early environmental coordination, so they understand that everybody doesn't have all of the plans to dive over and, and look at the nitty gritty, but they're asking for essentially big picture comments back.
Okay, great. And that's separate from those section six review?
So this is like the very beginning process of section 106 review?
106, thank you. A little tard tonight. Okay. And otherwise, I mean, I think this captured in terms of the Historical Society site, we talked about those alternatives at one of our meetings and the board did vote that this was sort of our preferred plan for the Historical Society site out of the ones presented. And so I think this reflects that. And so otherwise I am fine with it.
Any other proposed additions to the substance of the letter? As I said, I'm going to clean it up a little bit, including changing the middle initial of my, my name, but. Okay. Okay. Audience?
Tara Fredericks West Acton. I saw Bill Clower in the hallway the other day and I asked if they had agreed on any specific plans and they said, he said no. And I said, it wasn't even, I didn't even understand that there would have to be two sidewalks, that you could just cross the street, go on the other sidewalk. And he said that he thought that was a wonderful idea. So I don't think he understood that there was any agreement relative to the Board of Selectmen preferring one option or the other. I, I didn't feel like there was any option that they had put forth.
So I didn't just say that the Historical Society agreed to an option. I said that we looked at multiple options and the Board of Selectmen took a vote when we were putting forward the 25% design on what our preferred option was. And as Kristin noted, the letters are going to the Historical Society and the Historical Commission, so they will also be able to respond with their comments about the 25% design. And this does not, is not in place of the section 106 review process as well, which will also take place throughout this, this process.
Thank you. And the final vote is at the town meeting as to whether to proceed with an eminent domain if they don't agree. Is that correct? So in other words, if the Historical Society doesn't agree with whatever final plan, you have to go through an eminent domain process? Is that correct?
Kristin, Kristin, do you have any information you can provide? That doesn't sound right, but.
Yeah, I can explain the process. So essentially the 25% design plans are in Mass DOT's hands now. So they're going to review them, all the different sectors of Mass DOT, including their historic, historic review process. And then they will be holding a formal public hearing. So it's Mass DOT's public hearing to hear comments back from the public. Some of these comments that are being collected now will be heard then. And then they will collect those comments, they'll have their own comments from all their different sectors, and then they'll give them back to the engineers to either tell them you need to address this or this needs to change, you need to modify that. But it's a community discussion too. They want to hear from the community about that. From there, GPI will, our consultants will make whatever changes are necessary. Obviously they are working for the town and so they need to be in agreement with what the town wants to see. And then there are certain votes that have to take place at town meeting. The town needs to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, to take land by gift eminent domain. domain, takings, any method of taking land. But it will be on a project-wide basis, so it will be for the project, just as, just as the town has done for the rail trails. And then the towns, the town has to move forward with the actual acquisition process, which is not looking at individual properties and asking town meeting individual properties to take or not to take.
No, I just meant that if town meeting does not vote for the plan, because the good portion of town meeting is not happy with the plan, they would have that chance to vote against it at the eminent domain vote at town meeting, is that correct?
An eminent domain vote? I'm not really sure what you're talking about there. Kristen's talking about that, that there would be a vote that authorizes the town to enter into negoti, or to enter into takings related to what would hap, to happen along all of the properties for this project as a whole. And it doesn't allow us necessarily, first of all, it doesn't negate the 106 process at all, it doesn't negate the review by Mass DOT, which includes the comments from, as well as the board and other boards, the Historical Society and the Historical Commission. And then at, is it during twenty-five percent, or once we get further along that we start to look at takings, like you've done, like we did with the rail trails, which are almost always either by gift or purchasing the land through negotiations with the owners?
So we can begin appraisal processes at a certain point in time, and so that can begin prior to getting the vote at town meeting for the authorization for the town, the Board of Selectmen to take, you know, receive by gift, do eminent domain and so forth.
So if I can just clarify one thing, that, the town members can have their input on the design through the Mass DOT process. They are not gonna, the town members will not vote at town meeting though on the design itself. So the design itself is not subject to sort of approval by town meeting. Town meeting will vote on two things, one is the sort of giving the Board of Selectmen the authorization to enter into these sort of agreements or takings, however you wanna describe it. And the other ultimately is gonna be to fund whatever that cost may be. But the liberal design, whether it's got two lanes or three lanes, or whatever this, whatever it is, or turns left, turns right, that's not gonna be subject to a town meeting sort of review and vote.
Thank you. So by the word takings, isn't that eminent domain?
Madam Chair?
Peter?
I, I just wanna emphasize, we are not in an adversarial relationship with the Historical Society. We had a site visit out there with the engineers, the designers. The Historical Society has applied for CPA grant to do an entire master plan over their whole site. They've talked to the Design Review Committee, they've got some landscape architects on board who've come up with some proposed alternatives. They've agreed to work with us to try to work out something that's acceptable about the town and Historical Society. So we're not talking about eminent domain.
Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting anybody's being adversarial, I just wanted to understand our rights under law and whether town meeting was gonna have a right to say no at some point for takings, and I guess I got my answer that yes, there will be a vote, a binding vote at town meeting for the takings. So if people are not happy with the design, then they could say no to the takings, and then that would stop the process, is that correct?
I mean, yes, the takings, but again, it's not on individual properties, it's on a complete project or not, and it's, you know, I don't like the implication keep, having that it's just on eminent domain, that as Peter said, we're not really talking about eminent domain. Is it one option that would be, we would be authorized to do? Yes, but that's not the first option that we would be looking at for any of these properties.
Yes, so then if people are unhappy with the parcel at the Historic Society, or if they're unhappy with the large trees being taken out by the design, they can vote against the eminent, the takings vote at the, the town meeting, is that correct? Right, so that would be a point where they could stop the design if they're unhappy with the design, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I believe, I believe that is correct.
Thank you, that's all.
But stop cobbling it eminent domain, okay? This is not eminent domain, it's taking and it's negotiating, you know, with the owners of the property to pay them, okay? It's not.
I'm sorry, I thought.
Talking about it as just eminent domain is frankly, I'm looking forwards right now, it, it's misinformation. And, and I, I think that that's the point that's getting people up, me frankly, upset, because I don't like you going out and just saying that it's eminent domain, so don't refer to it as just eminent domain, I think is what we're saying.
I'll, I'll tell them.
And again, as Kristen and Andy said, there is also the point for the public to comment on the design at the Mass DOT's hearing, and I think that that's probably frankly the more appropriate way to have your comments heard than just by trying to kill a project through disallowing takings for an entire.
And just to clarify, I wasn't suggesting that, I was saying that if they don't like the way that their comments are handled, or the design is reflected relative to their comments and the changes are not within their liking, they will have the right to say no, that's all. I, I, I won't use the word eminent domain, because it's takings, I, I think legally that's the same thing, but either way, my only point was for people to know what their rights were, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, questions? All right, so, are we gonna vote? Do we have a motion in a second, or are we? Okay, why don't we get into the motion in a second about?
I'll move to authorize the Board of Selectmen Chair to sign a letter of support for the Kelly's Corner intersection improvements to the MBT, or to Mass dot.
Any further discussion? Katie Moose and Joan seconds.
Yeah, I, I think actually the, it actually goes to our town designers as opposed to DOT, but that's a minor point, I'm not sure.
Whoever.
Okay. I, second.
No, they've already, we've got moved in second, so while we're doing any further discussion, you've had your further discussion, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining. And then there's one more item that's not on the agenda that has to do with Kelly's Corner, and this has to do with this issue. It's the, it's a deputy chief of staff for the governor who wants to do a presentation to the Mass Municipal Association Regional Policy Committee, of which I'm supposedly a member, although I don't know if I'm supposed to go to the meeting. And the question was, the email that I circulated to you this after, it just came to Kristen, who then forwarded it to me with some suggested changes in the language that this deputy chief of staff is proposing to include in his presentation to the Mass Municipal Association Committee, but the question is, do we care if the governor's chief of staff or deputy chief of staff is sort of advertising Acton's Kelly's Corner project, provided that it's, the language that he uses is in accordance with what Kristen Gichard has, has provided is the correct language? I mean, obviously the, yeah.
My concern about this is, it, it seems to me that what he's asking your committee to do is support this legislation, and I don't want our board to be, I mean, we haven't taken any position on it yet, we don't even know really what the details of the legislation are at this point. I don't want the impression to be given that the town of Acton is somehow supporting this legislation when we haven't made that decision yet. Maybe we do, I don't know, but.
Using, using as our, because, well, one of the things he mentions is the, the failed vote and the fact that the governor's proposal would reduce the required vote from two-thirds to a majority, and, you know, which obviously would have helped us, but as I told Kristen in a separate email, it's, you know, I think that there's some discomfort potentially with doing that at the local level. And then, in any event, I think the hope would be that a second attempt at getting the vote would be successful at getting two-thirds, without need for us to consider a majority option alternative, so. But, you know, I'd be interested if, if other people have, I, I mean, I had a little bit of that concern, and I also was uncomfortable, okay, I'm gonna show up for, you know, the first, first time, maybe tomorrow, I don't know if I should just show up, oh, we didn't mean for you to show up just yet, because we're talking about your project among other things, but it just, I don't know, I thought, well, it would look as if I was planting this, you know, in, in the statements this person is gonna present about, that happens to include our town and looking for an endorsement, which I wouldn't want, so, Katie?
I mean, I think it's clear, and as long as it's clear that this is not Acton supporting, you know, the governor's zoning reform legislation, but it's frankly the governor's office looking at the state and saying, here's projects that we've identified that, you know, in our opinion, our zoning reform bill would, you know, have a positive impact on, but it's not, I, I, to me, I didn't read it as having any implication from the, the Acton Board of Selectmen about our position on this at all. And if they wanna use us, that's fine, you know, I don't know that necessarily paints us in the best light, but I'm not, you know, it's, it's worthwhile, you know, we, we talk about how we often don't talk about failures and what that means, and I think it's worthwhile to, to, you know, for them to highlight that. And if they wanna do that, that's sort of their prerogative. I think it's good that Kristen, you know, cleared up some of the, you know, accuracies of the state, of the Jules kind of characterization or, or statement of the facts, but it doesn't, it didn't read to me that it was kind of indicating our support or disapproval of, of this at all, and so I think as long as that is still clear, that's, that's fine by me.
I mean, I could always suggest that he just emphasized that, make a disclaimer or something, that, you know, we're just an example, it doesn't, it's not to suggest that we've endorsed the governor's proposal because we haven't, but any other comments, concerns?
Didn't we just vote to?
No, this is a different, this is a different issue. This is, this is, I circulated, I circulated, this is a third Kelly's Corner letter.
Town meeting in the fall.
No, 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 this is a third Kelly's Corner issue, this has to do with the email that I circulated this afternoon, which was the first I got it, has to do with this proposal from this governor's staff member to present a statement.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay, okay, so you don't have any issues with that?
Yeah.
I mean, it says that we voted to go, or that we planned to go back in the fall, so that reflects the, what we did.
So, so if, you know, I, if people wanna vote, fine, but if you're, if you're comfortable with just telling this person it's okay to use us as an example, as long as there's some sort of clarification that we're not endorsing the governor's proposal at this time, then we can go forward with that. Okay. Good, thank you. Any comments, questions from the audience, yeah?
Yeah, Danny Factor Eleven Davis wrote, I just wanna second Janet's idea that I think that it should be made clear that, I mean, I don't think that there's a consensus in the town as far as the proposed zoning regulations, specifically the governor's. If you look at what Governor Baker calls the housing choice initiatives, I know it's very tempting seeing some of these votes that have been just short of two-thirds to, you know, do away with that and bring things to a, a simple majority, but you remember that things cut both ways, that if you look at the governor's bill, there are some tempting things that, you know, it would be nice to pass by fifty percent having to do with natural resource districts and things like that. At the same time, there's the potential to make it, you know, perhaps too easy for the town to increase unneeded development and sprawl where we don't need it too easy. So I don't think there's a consensus in the town on this, and I think it would be good to be very clear in the letter and make it clear that at this time, the town and the board, you know, is not saying that it supports specific legislation, thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Madam Chair, let me just make, I'm sorry, I wanna just make sure I understand the process here, the MMA, this is a regional committee, did you say, or is this a central committee?
It's a, it's a, it's an MMA committee, and they're, they're the regional policy, there's some other word in there, it's Regional Policy Committee, and I think that they, well, they got in touch with the town manager and wanted to know if there's somebody who deals with housing issues on the board, and that's how, how I got called. And I thought, well, okay, this is interesting, you know, understand that this would probably be a short-term thing, it just, but anyhow, so that's.
Okay, well, by understanding.
It's their policy, it's one of their numerous policy development committees and sort of.
All right, so you, you don't anticipate that this meeting is gonna have a vote to recommend to the full MMA that they support this legislation or not support this legislation, or?
No.
My experience, and I think maybe the town manager can help with this.
No, no, I think.
Any policy changes to the MMA have to be voted on by the membership at the annual meeting.
Right, and I mean, my understanding is that this whole issue, this whole ball of wax, it's, it's gonna be the focus of the coming years' activities, you know, I think it's a real complex mess, and, and they're trying to get a handle on it. I know they have, MMA has a position about this sort of thing they call the omnibus zoning bill, the kitchen sink bill, I call it, but, you know, this, this is another issue, the governor's proposal, I know that MMA, or at least this committee, is not keen on the two-thirds to majority vote proposal of the governor, they have reservations about that. What they think about the rest of it, I don't know. I think they like the opt-in idea, I think that the, the concern they have about, or had about the omnibus bill, and it sounds as if the senator said that it is opt-in, but my impression was that the, the omnibus bill was kind of a top-down imposition. It was gonna have a lot of mandatory position, provisions, which was an issue for the MMA, cause they're looking out for local control, you know, so, anyhow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I, I was just making sure you understand the difference, the 4075, the fast-tracked housing choice initiative is different than the omnibus bill, they both bring the two-thirds down to the fifty-one percent, but reportedly, the 4075 is just opt-in, whereas the omnibus would be pushed down on us. Now, we, Green Acton submitted a list of concerns and questions to Steve Ledoux, who gave it to town council, and we're hoping that you will see that yourselves, a list of concerns and questions that I think need to be addressed before they vote on this at the state legislature. And one of them is, is it truly opt-in? There's parts of it that make references to other parts of forty, chapter forty, which means that it might have some impact on the rest of chapter forty. The other thing is, would it allow, if we voted on, I guess this could be our choice if it was ever an opt-in vote, to, after you designate an area multifamily housing, would they then, the developers by right, be able to plow down all those extremely affordable housing and put in luxury apartments? The profit motive says absolutely that that's what you're gonna get. So don't, I, I think that we need to have these questions answered before we take the vote, not after we have the vote.
We're not taking.
No, 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 not us Acton, I mean the MMA and the state legislature. So if you're going, please bring that message forward, that we are looking for some answers from our town attorney, and I hope they get answers from us, for us, from their municipal attorneys as to what could be the gentrification impact across the state. Because they're talking about thirty percent, increasing the growth by thirty percent around the state, and it'll probably be more, because it'll be by right, it'll be market dictated. So I'd like to get some of these answers now, before they vote, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. ALG update? Hmm? Excuse me? You wanna start?
Pulling up my notes. So we met last Thursday at ALG, going into the meeting, I think we were about, we had, the spreadsheet showed about one point one million dollars in deficit, but that was updated, it increased the reserve use from one point three million to two million, based on our discussions at the previous ALG meeting, that the finance committee had agreed to that. It reduced the unused levy use by about six hundred thousand, so it kept two-thirds of the unused levy unused, and we will be using about a third of that. And then it reflected the changes in both the town and schools budgets that are largely reflective of the HIT trust vote to decrease health insurance rates by five percent for next year. So as we know, that reduced the town's budget to a two point five four percent increase, and it reduced the schools budget to about a three point three percent increase in their budget, and that at the time was like a four point two, I think it was a four point, I don't have it right here, cause that's a revisor, no, it was four point two five increase in the Acton assessment. And then there were some other minor changes related to reduction of new growth based on FY eighteen actuals and how that kind of flowed into FY nineteen, and so that left us with about a five hundred and eighty-five thousand deficit, and so the schools said that they were willing, they agreed that the town should not cut our budget, cause we're at a very reasonable two point five percent increase. The schools have agreed to decrease their budget, their assessment actually, by around two hundred thousand, which is, is due to some changes they had. 200,000, which is, is due to some changes they had related to their case assessment, some adjustments in expected revenue based on the governor's budget, some savings that they would have from actually implementing a special ed program at the junior high that would actually involve more FTE, but the cost of those FTEs more than offset by the reduction in having to send students out of district and a few other things. And so that would bring their, their total budget down to a 3.06, essentially a 3% increase, and Acton's assessment would be about a 3.9% increase. And so then the proposal kind of from Moser Group was then to have that $200,000 reduction in the school's assessment and increase our reserve use by 385,000 to make up the rest of that, that deficit. So we would have just under 2.4 million use of reserve, of reserves. And we were kind of viewing that the finance committee chair had sort of agreed that that made sense. He also felt especially that there was, I think, 190, what's the Minuteman capital? It's like 190 or something like that? I think so. I think it's 190,000 is from, yeah, he essentially said 200,000.
That was embodied in the...
Yeah, that was embodied in the Minuteman assessment. It's actually for the Minuteman, our first year of the, the building costs for the new Minuteman High School. Most of the other towns have bonded that, but since we have some potential large bonding things in the future, we have not bonded that yet. And the, the two members of the school committee and two members of Board of Selectmen and the finance committee chair all seemed comfortable with increasing the reserves by the 385,000. The FinCom had sort of asked us to come back and say, well, what are your, you know, if you want to increase reserves over 2 million, because we, we put in an expectation of replenishing reserves by 2 million, and that's based on a number of prior years that actually has been, on average, over 2 million, but we agreed to kind of forecast 2 million replenishment, so they see that as a net neutral. And so they said, we don't, we want the use of any reserves above 2 million to be tied to one-time capital. So the Minuteman clearly qualifies for that. We have one-time capital for things like the train whistle ban at 140,000, the bike share program, and then all of the capital that we're bonding. And the schools have about a million dollars' worth of one-time capital in their budget. So we felt like that's well over the, you know, 185,000 difference where we are. So again, the majority of ALG was supportive of that, but one member of the finance committee was not, so we were not at consensus at that point. So we need to go back, and we are having another meeting this Thursday. I think our position, unless the board feels otherwise, is still that we would not, you know, I, I don't think there's any intention for us to look at lowering our budget any more than we already have. We've more than met the FinCom's point-of-view request of lower, of 3% increase in our budget. The schools are now at their, the FinCom's request of a 3% increase in their budget, and we're only using a third of the unused levy per the FinCom's request, their point-of-view. So we've essentially met all of the points in their point-of-view, so hopefully they can come around to see that and, and come to consensus. So I don't know if there was anything I missed.
So we're, out of a $90 million budget, we're, we're dealing with $184,000 in deficit, and there's one person who really just can't see clear to just authorizing another $200,000 in reserves use. But everybody else, including the FinCon chairman, is on board, so I have a feeling there will be consensus at the next meeting, so.
Yeah, we, I mean, I, I support reducing the unused tax levy use. I mean, that's kind of, we expressed that last time. And using the reserves, which are rainy day fund basically, for one-time capital expenses makes sense.
I mean, the, as Katie said, we've, you know, we've met all of the point-of-view requirements, including with regard to reserves use, because we're tying it to capital. And, and the, the FinCon chairman has acknowledged that. He said, you know, some, some years FinCom hasn't gotten, you know, maybe more than one of its, its, you know, wish list standards met, so, so they're doing pretty well this year. But I think it helped that they provided us with a point-of-view earlier, which I think a number of people recommended when they sought comments about point-of-view last year. So anyhow, any other comments, questions? All right, yes?
I love that you got the point-of-view earlier, and I love that they're working on a consensus-based governance process, so I'm just making that comment. A question, is the split, how, how is the split figured currently?
It's about the same. I mean, we're, you know, we, we've got a $30 million budget, and they've got about a $90 million, six, or six, sorry, 60 million dollars.
You mean, you mean 85, 8515, or something like that? I don't know what it is. We don't talk about the split anymore.
I should say the Boxboro Acton split, I should have been more clear. The Boxboro Acton split, how is that figured?
Oh, between Boxboro students and Acton students?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's about 8515, and actually, they're projecting, there's, if you go on the school committee's website and look at their packet from their last meeting, there's a presentation on the Table Six assessment that determines, or the Table Six in, in the agreement that determines our assessments and some of the changes that, that kind of flow through that based on the full regionalization agreement. But it also talks about the current split and the projected split going forward. And right now, looking, I think, like five years out or so, it's shifting actually to more growth in Boxboro, so that split will be reducing some, and they are forecasting, you know, kind of a decrease in Acton's assessment versus Boxboro's. Right now, their assessment's actually going down this year over last year.
And the, the way that that's figured, that hasn't changed in how many years?
What do you mean, the way it's figured?
It's a calculation, the formula?
So it changed in the regional agreement.
Okay, that's what it's, okay. Great, thank you very much.
But it does not change.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments from the audience? All right, I think we're done here.
I'll move to it, Jen.
Good.
Katie Moose and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're done.